You have to respond.
Alan, I just got mine the other day. That's why was your reaction bad?
Not so far. So, uh, we'll see.
I was very tired and had a sore arm. I didn't know if I'd make it to that meeting last night that we had. So I, I wanted to get that vaccine. That was number one.
Yeah.
At your first shot or your second shot?
Second.
And my second too.
Yeah.
Well, good. You're both signs of of positive second days.
Yes.
Great. Okay, Commissioner Willie, are you with us?
You are good to go, Madam Chair.
Okay, so welcome back everyone to the work session of Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. The next item on our agenda is a legislative update with our government relations team. So take it away, Jagjit Nagara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, good afternoon, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jagjit Nagara, Government Relations Manager here at the county. Uh, this afternoon, I'm joined by Aaron Doyle and Paige Spence, the full complement of our county lobby team. We're going to provide you an update in the federal space and the state legislative update as well. So next slide, please. Thank you. In terms of our agenda, we have three main buckets to move through. Very quickly, I'm going to start with a look back on our appropriations programmatic requests. Phew, that work is done. Thank you, everybody for the heavy lift with that. Um, then we're going to go shift back to the state side of things. We'll start with our tried and true state legislative timeline to help guide you with where we are at in this current session. And then next we'll move into the meat of our conversation today, which is the state legislative discussion. The focus of today's discussion is really going to be centered in the health, human services, housing and homelessness area. That'll be the bulk of the presentation. So with that, I will kick it over. Oh, excuse me, one more slide. I'm sorry. Let's move forward one more slide. So starting with the programmatic appropriations requests, as you recall, these programmatic requests are basically the county, we're one of the, the federal governments or congressional stakeholders who are saying, hey, Congress, these are the discretionary grant programs we really care about. CDBG, build, CDBG, excuse me, Commissioner Phi is Community Development Block Program Program. Right? We have a whole department dedicated to this. It's very important to us. And so we successfully submitted over sixteen or sixteen exactly requests to both Senator Merkley and Senator Wyden. And I just want to give a shout out to all of our departments and county council for all the awesome help they've provided. This is on top of all of the state work that we're asking them to do in terms of vetting bills, giving talking points and doing analysis. So I just want to acknowledge that this was a team effort. I really appreciate it. There's not any questions here. We can move to the next slide. So this is um, our state timeline, which just continues. Go ahead, Chair Harrington. Do I see you raising your hand?
Sorry, and maybe this will come up at the end, but since it has to do with uh, the federal uh, business, I wanted to ask if now is the time you wanted us to give you a thumbs up on the letter or later?
Um, later, because I'm going to have Aaron Doyle drive that conversation, but you are always ahead of the game and I love it. Um, I like it. You're on it. So with our state timeline, just the, the dates kind of keep shifting as we're moving into the second chamber deadlines now. So May 14th will be a critical deadline for scheduling work sessions. Jumping ahead, May 28th will be another critical date for when we really have a sense of what bills will not be moving forward, which will be certainly dispositive in our advocacy in relation to budgetary asks. Sandwich in between those two dates is May 19th. That's a very interesting revenue forecast for me in particular, because now the state has been infused, just like the county or will be infused with a large amount of money from the federal government. I want to see what impact that has in terms of the revenue forecast. And most importantly, I'm curious as to how it will temper or perhaps uh, increase the appetite of spending by the, the co-chairs of Ways and Means. That's my hope. And with that, I will turn it over to Paige Spence. Next slide.
Hey, Jagjit, this is Kevin. Uh, we have a little trouble trying to get Paige over, so I'm trying to connect with her.
He is currently experiencing some internet problems and cannot figure out why her internet is down. Um, so Kevin, if you could just go to the next slide, um, I'll go and hopefully she can get connected because she is the bulk of our presentation, if you don't mind. Um, so even though it's not on the slide, um, as you all saw in an email from me yesterday afternoon, um, there was a request from Congresswoman Bonamichi's office that we provide a letter of support for the Salmonberry Trail project that was put in by the Salmonberry Trail um, nonprofit organization um, to have an earmark in the Reauthorization Act. So that's the bill that has bigger opportunities for more earmarks for slightly larger projects. Um, this is the bill that we put in um, for ourselves, the smart technology in the transportation system request, and then co-partnered with Hills Boat and Cornelius and ODOT on the TV Highway Project. So this would be a final letter of support of the Salmonberry Trail. The request comes from Congresswoman Bonamichi's office with a really tight turnaround um, request was made on Friday. Um, we needed, we need to get it in as soon as possible. She's making her final decisions as to what she will push forward from the big bucket that she got. Um, this is an indication that this is high on her list of probables. Um, so she just wants to see that there's community support. So um, I can't see all of you, but I see Chair Harrington giving a thumbs up. I would just like to know if there's a thumbs up from everyone else.
I can see everybody. Commissioner Phi, Commissioner Rogers?
Commissioner Rogers? I'm sorry, I have a question.
Oh, yes, please.
I don't have any objection. It's been on our list for a while, longer than uh, even Jerry's been pushing on it, I think, and which is, it's a good thing that he is. But how, how about the other projects? I mean, you take uh, we can pick from one end of the county to the other. You know, the Beaverton has their, their loop. Uh, Twolton has their projects on uh, Boon's Ferry, Tiger's got a trail, uh, Hillsborough has a couple of projects. Are, are we in any?
So this project, so a lot of the trails and things that we did put in letters of support for the appropriations process for uh, three of the trails um, that folks were seeking support for. Within the J-Pact process, instead of doing individualized letters for every single um, project that was a, that was pushed forward by J-Pact. So Beaverton's project um, and a few others that of course are lost to my memory of last week. Um, those all got a joint letter of support from the entire J-Pact community with our logos attached to it. So this project is sits outside of the J-Pact process because Salmonberry is not part of the J-Pact scope of work. Instead, this came through a process that was done by the Northwest Act. Um, and so it, it didn't get considered as part of that package of letters that supported all the projects of the J-Pact process. It was outside of the general appropriations process because this sits in the reauthorization bucket. So we've managed to provide letters of support to pretty much everyone within Washington County, be it through a joint letter or through a direct letter of support, um, except for this particular project. And um, does that answer your question, Commissioner Rogers?
No, I, I knew everything you just said, but uh, yeah, no, no offense intended, but that what's happening i- is we had a bucket of money that we thought were going to be allocated. We now know it's about half of that. And so what I'm asking, uh, and again, I have no issue. This is a good project, but will it come to a point where we're going to have to pick between, because that's, that's Northwest Regional Act, that's not Region One. Uh, but I don't think Suzanne probably cares much about that. She's just looking at project. Are we going to be asked to pick? I mean, it is, for instance, if Twolton comes and said, how come you guys are pushing that one, the county versus our project? They don't really care a lot about J-Pact. They care, they do, but they care about us. Or will the folks, will Lacy Beatty come and say, but I have this wonderful route project. Why are you pushing things ahead of it? Or is that gonna, I'm just wanting to prepare myself.
Um, Commissioner Rogers, I'm sure that some people will ask that question, but I do think at the J-Pact level, there's been a pretty clear conversation amongst staff that um, for those of us who sit in the position of having areas inside and outside the J-Pact process, we do have other considerations besides those uh, projects within the J-Pact process. Um, Cox County is in a similar position as is Multnomah County to some degree. Um, so I, I, we can't prevent anyone from asking the question. I think that um, what's different here is that we've been specifically asked by Congresswoman Bonamichi for this letter to show that there is support from the elected officials who represent the area. And in this case, that is Washington County because it is a project within the unincorporated areas of Washington County. I think being responsive to the Congresswoman is um, useful. I think that the other piece of it is, is that we've put in what our requests are. Um, and in the letter, it very much does say that this is in addition to um, the projects that we specifically already asked for um, that have our money to match, but we're supportive of this um, project as well um, as all the other projects we have. So we're not, we haven't been asked to prioritize by the Congresswoman. Um, but she's in the process of doing it, so.
Let me interrupt the interruption, kind of save you because I'm not really getting to the point with you, I guess. Would it be best for us to have a letter to the Congresswoman saying we support the Northwest Act's requests for this project so that it doesn't get mixed with the rest of them? So there's a clear, we're supporting the act. We think it's, it's a priority for our county as well. That way the buckets will be a different bucket. And talking with Shirley Craddock a couple of times last week, I said, Shirley, you're going to have to have some kind of of paring down, and she knows it, of, of what is there. That may come out of the bucket that's in the Northwest Act without, unscathed. We may not have to have any cutting. And so I'm just wondering, should we, we support the project, let me just say, support the project, and we support the Northwest Regional, not regional, but Northwest Act in that request, would that give us a little bit more edge on it in trying to come through another cutting that surely to happen at the J-Pact level? That's the question.
Uh, so the, my immediate response to that is we have less than 12 hours to really get this turned around. So I'm not sure if we can rewrite the letter at this point.
Well, if, Aaron, if I, if I could jump in a little bit, Roy, I was um, remember that Congresswoman Bonamichi's district is fairly large.
Right.
And her assistant has, was in communication with us, us being the Northwest Act group. When we were having our conversations about what kind of programs or projects are we going to recommend from the Northwest Act? And what we decided would be that each county would submit their own, that would be Clatsop, that would be Columbia. And Salmonberry fell under the State Parks and Rec, and that's the direction they were going. And then State Parks and Rec came back and said they can't endorse any project. And so that's how it's coming to us as a recommendation for that. This, I believe, if I understood, you know, philosophically, what the Congresswoman is trying to do is she's trying to spread the peanut butter around her district, obviously, which there's going to be uh, a different evaluations done for the Northwest Act portion of whatever it is that she allocates to that. Then it is going to be the Region One Act, okay? So I think what you're, what you're trying to do is you're trying to combine the Salmonberry Trail project into the, the Region One Act, the J-Pact Act, the, all of those, you're trying to spread them all together. And this is, this is sitting outside. City of Banks applied separately as well. So these are kind of individual projects that are not getting, I mean, sure, they're going to come out of the same bucket, but they're not going to compete, I don't believe, with the same Region One projects. So and we're, and as far as I know, we're not going to do the prioritization. She's going to be doing that.
Yeah, Jerry, just to be very clear, I don't want to belabor this. I'm doing exactly, I'm proposing the exact opposite of what you just said. I was trying to separate them so that nobody comes back to this county and says, well, which of these do you want? We said, well, out of the bucket of Region One, we want one set of project. Uh, the Northwest Act, we want another set of project.
But this is not a Northwest Act. This is not a Northwest Act, Roy. This one's flying, this one's flying solo. Because we tried to get it through the Oregon Parks and Rec. This, this one's flying solo, but it just comes under uh, a request for the earmarks. So.
Okay, you don't think it helps. I was trying to help you.
No, I, no, I don't think so. I think we do what Aaron is recommending. We write a letter of support for the Salmonberry Trail Foundation project uh, that's been submitted to Congresswoman Bonamichi.
And that letter was, was sent out to you all to, to review yesterday afternoon. And it does state that this is in addition to the TV Highway Safety Improvement Project and the Washington County Smart Transportation Technology, Technology Project. And I, I want to emphasize, because I think this maybe gets to some of the questions you're asking Commissioner Rogers about how do we go back to our other partners when they say, how do you prioritize? The Congresswoman is prioritizing at this point. We have put in our requests. If this letter of support just shows that there has public official support for the project if she does select it, but it's no, it, it, at this point, it is out of our hands what gets prioritized and Congresswoman Bonamichi's office has to have that conversation. And each individual congressman and um, that sits within the Region One Act will be doing the same exercises for all of the other projects that were brought to them, even out of the J-Pact process. So um, it is my recommendation that we only provide this letter of support for the Salmonberry Trail for that reason.
So we have four or five thumbs up. Commissioner Rogers, are you in support? Great. It's approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Um, I, I know that Paige is available now. Would you prefer if we went back to her slide and then came to my slide or I'm? Okay. Um, I'm just going to talk really quickly through the three bills that are on the slide, just to, so that way I'm done. Um, I wanted to just bring these to your attention. There are three small bills. Um, a lot of the bigger bills that we've talked about have gone the way of deadlines. Um, but House Bill 3049, you would have seen an alert from AOC last week. This is a bill that Washington County has been working with AOC in conjunction for making sure that we can charge a permit fee for utilities that um, there will be an amendment that basically states that the permit fee cannot exceed the cost of our actual work. Um, this is just to recoup some small, small but significant amounts of money. Um, we are moving forward with that and will continue to work with AOC on that. Uh, under Public Contracting Senate Bill 213, um, this was raised by Chair Harrington after the LOC Legislative Meeting. Conveniently, that same morning as it was being brought forward at that meeting, it went the way of a deadline, not um, receiving passage on the work session. So that bill is no longer under consideration. It is instead being moved into a work group that will occur over the interim. And finally, I just want to raise up um, fairgrounds. I don't talk about it enough for my portfolio, but House Bill 3173 is an important bill that takes out the hard dollar amount that goes towards, from the lottery funds into the county fairgrounds programs. And instead just remains at that 1% of the lottery fund dollars regardless of what those numbers are. And it also is intended to assist county fairgrounds with creating facility, uh, facility plans and facility upgrade plans. Washington County is of course ahead of that game a little bit, um, but hopefully we can find some more dedicated funding to that. Um, with that, unless there are questions on any of these bills or anything else in my portfolio, which I see Commissioner Willie raises his hand, so.
Yeah, so uh, House Bill 3173 for fairgrounds, just to give you a concept, uh, currently we receive $53,166 precisely uh, from the Department of Ag, uh, from the lottery funds on this. This bill would increase that amount to about $200,000, which it was evidently 10 years ago or something. I don't know the timeline on it, but that's what it used to be. Now it's 53,000. We're asking for it to be reinstated back to the $200,000 level. So just to give you a perspective of how that will impact our fair budget.
I supported this through AOC on behalf of Washington County.
Thank you for that.
Um, with that, if we could, unless there's further questions, can we go back to Paige's slide and I'll turn it back over to Paige, who I believe is here now. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Hello, Paige, welcome.
Hello, Chair and Erin and Commissioners. Apologies, I had to do the old restart the modem thing. So thanks for your patience with me. Um, so yes, for public record, Paige Spence, Government Relations Manager for Health and Human Services and our Housing Authority. Um, as I assume my colleagues mentioned, again, since I wasn't here for the very beginning, sorry about that. Um, last week was the work session deadline for each bill's chamber of origin, um, with some exceptions. So what I'm planning on discussing with you today is going to be um, the policy bills that government relations and department staff are most actively working on that have survived those deadlines. Um, some of these bills are going to be reviewed for you and updates, and some are actually going to be new concepts. Um, so please keep in mind that while it may seem late for me to be bringing some new concepts to you that we haven't discussed yet in session, they've really been evolving significantly in substance. Um, and so uh, GGR and our department staff have been operating under guiding principles. Um, in the meantime, so this presentation is really intended to be informational for you, um, for your board. I do not have uh, action items, but I would rather just provide an overview of some somewhat varied and complex topics and want to invite your questions if any, um, now that these topics are ripe for discussion. So with that, I will dive right in. So first, I'm turning to public health, just a quick update on uh, what we have been discussing about. Uh, Senate Bill 587, which is tobacco retail licensure. Um, thank you, Chair Harrington, for bringing up this bill's importance with the Ways and Means co-chairs in your meetings. Uh, the bill is in Ways and Means and will be continuing to advocate uh, for its overdue passage this session. Uh, the next bill under public health is House Bill 2965. Um, this bill does one thing and one thing only. It changes the date that local public health authorities like ours have to submit our public health modernization plans for implementing the model that was created in law, um, changing that. And the reason is, is that you may recall the legislature adopted public health modernization in 2015 with a target funding goal of uh, over $200 million by 2023, but only 15 million has been allocated to date. So by um, passing this bill, it gives an extra by name to the state to fully fund the work so that local public health can effectively implement and submit OHA plans once we have the funding to really undertake the work. And that just passed off the House floor, yeah, Friday, Thursday, last week. Um, so uh, the last bill under public health uh, is uh, House Bill 3159. And this has to do with patient data gathering. And our public health team is really excited about this bill, which is one uh, to advance equity in public health. So just a quick bit of context, uh, the legislature passed a bill in 2013 uh, which directed the Oregon Health Authority and Department of Human Services to um, collaborate on standardizing and improving how race, ethnicity, spoken and written language, disability, gender identity, sexual orientation are, um, how that data is collected with the goal of helping Oregon understand and address social and health inequities and guide the development of culturally specific and accessible um, services uh, to address health inequities and public health. So um, this bill for 2021 is just a small piece of this work. It will require um, health providers, including our local public health authority, to report to this data um, to OHA just once a year. Uh, and I don't think I'm seeing any questions, so I'm going to keep plugging on and go over to behavioral health. Um, so the first bill under behavioral health is uh, for Measure 110 implementation. So as you will recall, the voters approved uh, in November 2020, uh, Measure 110 around substance use disorders and behavioral health. Um, so this is a bill we have not talked about yet, um, and it's um, a little bit scary news, so just stay tuned, but we're working on it. Um, but for our agency, the most important component of um, a bill to kind of tweak the language and, and fix implementation of how Measure 110 would be implemented is uh, addressing losses that uh, we would incur from existing marijuana tax revenues. So we currently receive about $700,000 each year in marijuana tax revenue, which goes to the County General Fund. Um, and after looking at our quarter one for 2021 impact of after Measure 110, uh, our county CFO, Jack Leong, projects that this revenue is wiped out about 70% absent legislative intervention. Um, so Rob Ovett with AOC is leading the advocacy for counties at the Measure 110 Implementation Workgroup and diligently trying to mitigate that loss. Um, so I wanted to bring that to your attention as something that we are grappling with financially. Um, the next bill under behavioral health is Senate Bill 198. Um, you will recall that your board has approved a fiscal priority this session and in 2020 for funding our Behavioral Health Division to provide uh, the statutorily required services to our aid and assistance population. Um, what government relations has not yet discussed, discussed with your board, but that I understand Brad Anderson has been including in county council updates is that the state does not currently offer liability protection for the county uh, for harms that could arise to a third party from activities undertaken by a person receiving, receiving our aid and assistance services. Um, Lane County is experiencing or facing a very expensive lawsuit, um, and some county councils, including ours, had as a result of these liability concerns, been holding off on signing our behavioral health contract with the state. Um, I believe from Brad, that contract either has now been signed or is immediately going to be signed. Um, but so we have kind of two strategic paths as try to fix this going forward. One is, and then government relations in Lane County are partnering together um, on uh, the legislative text, hopefully to specify that someone who is receiving uh, our aid and assistance services um, that the, our community health worker here at the county would be considered a um, officer, employee or agent for indemnity within the Oregon Tort Claims Act. So this is all about trying to protect the county from potential expense of liability out of litigation should an event arise. And at this time, I do not have any knowledge that we have anything imminent. Um, House Bill 2417, I wanted to make sure to bring to your attention because uh, to hear your government relations staff say they might have concerns about a bill to implement uh, mobile health mental response statewide might be surprising. Um, and it was really just because the bill was originally introduced as um, a bill to implement the, specifically the Kahoots Model out of Eugene statewide. Uh, it was a very complex bill, and as suspicions continued, it became clear that that model is not necessarily the ideal form of mobile mental health response in every community. For example, we're Washington County and our local partners operate a different model that our behavioral health and line for seventeen thinks works pretty well here. So um, House Bill 2417 has really evolved and it's now largely uh, just a funding vehicle for um, both new and existing local jurisdiction, um, mobile mental health response programs. So once we have sort of more numbers around what that I would mean revenue coming to the county, I'll be sure to update you for it, but we don't have that number yet. Um, and then the last bill under behavioral health, um, I would say this of all the policy bills that are left on the table following last week's committee deadline. This is the only one in my portfolio that really has some complexed and unresolved issues. So uh, as you may recall, Congress last year, in response to COVID-19, passed the National Suicide Hotline Designation Act, which creates a three-digit number, 988, for suicide prevention nationwide. So think about this as a new, in 10 years, hopefully today's youth will know in 988 as they know 911. Um, but this is your, your mental health crisis response line. So um, the Congressional Act establishes rules that all telephone service providers, so you know, like our telephone carriers, have to direct 988 calls um, by July 2022. And so at each state is grappling with implementation. And what the Oregon Health Authority has proposed is um, a pretty complex consolidation of the existing community mental health crisis lines. Uh, and county mental health programs, including our staff, are asking for the state to really meaningfully include us and other groups already doing this work that we achieve a truly coordinated system and move forward. Um, right now, some folks who engage with this system a lot, including uh, EMS providers, ER providers and county mental health providers, um, and most importantly, false lived experience really haven't been at the table. Um, so the other complexity here is the funding mechanism that the Oregon Health Authority is proposing uh, as a telecom tax, which would require a three-fifths majority in both the House and the Senate, which at this point seems like a pretty uphill battle. Um, so as the weeks continue, I'll be increasing my engagement with our delegation to let them know about how this 988 conversation is progressing um, and working with OHA and other county lobbyists to ensure that all needed voices are including, included in the policies. So the behavioral health realm, um, you know, we've got Nick O'Conne. I do want to give him some good recognition because he is new-ish as a Behavioral Health Division Manager, following Kristen Burke's transition. And I have been keeping Nick very busy uh, this session. So we appreciate the legislature's attention to behavioral health and um, Nick is doing a wonderful job uh, helping each other, both from an I getting at the speed on these complexes. Um, so turning to um, some, some positive and fun, um, hopefully outcomes for our communities. Um, I'm really excited about uh, House Bill 3116, which is under the IDD, our Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Program. Um, this is sort of the thorniest one each year to deal with fiscally because um, our county is increasingly asked to um, take on programmatic work that the state has put forward each legislation. But then when the state agency DHS comes out with their workload model, it's not until May. We got some preliminary numbers next week. But anyway, that's all to say, I don't really know what to ask our Ways and Means co-chairs for yet because we don't have the workload model from the agency. So this is just kind of a technical fix bill, but that would hopefully really um, move the state's analysis upward in the timeline so that advocates can better um, be able to discuss the importance of these services and really talk maybe great budget earlier in session. Uh, and then the last topic I will cover here is housing and homelessness. And I think that you will agree that both, that most of the bills under this bucket really kind of fall also under the COVID-19 relief guiding principles that your board put forward. So um, first for homeowners in your community, and again, as is often the case with the housing and homelessness bills, some of these will be more germane to us as an agency and some to your constituencies, um, to our electorate, which are important to share for community health. So um, for homeowners, we've got House Bill 2009, which is an extension of the foreclosure moratorium. It extends it through June 30th, 2021, and includes express authority for the governor to extend that twice in three-month increments, should she decide that that is necessary. And then House Bill 3209 is foreclosure counseling. So that folks who may have decided that making a graceful exit from their home due to non-payment or other reasons, if that seems like the most likely path, then there is some funding to at least help folks be able to understand the process and make that transition if needed. And then for tenants, I think Senate Bill 282 is a really exciting one. It's come a long way. This is your sort of omnibus eviction prevention bill in response to COVID-19. I'm happy to say that it passed out of the Senate Committee with bipartisan support and a work group of both tenants and landlord advocates. Yes, so Chair Harrington, I see your question. I can pause for a second.
I was wondering on that eviction prevention, if I remember this correctly, and I may not be. There was a provision by which residents could get eviction prevention as long as they talked to their landlord and maybe they and their landlord both applied or something like that. And I was wondering if we have either in the county or in the region or even at the state level, what that take rate is turning out to be. Because it seems like there's one program that's already be, that's in place. And I wonder if, if that is proving to be successful and this is a continuation of that or if this is a different aspect of that. So sorry to be a little
That's Chair Harrington, yes, yes, sorry to interrupt you. Yes, you're asking exactly the right question. And I don't have an answer for you yet, but that's something that I'm going to make a note to try to update you on. And the reason being is that, and it was part of the bill design to, so what this bill now does in substance really is a couple of things. One, the kind of primary one is extending the grace period for repayment of back rent through February 22. And that is, so that is because, so your take rate, I don't know yet, but the reason that the legislature is really considering sort of this, you know, the back rent grace period rather than just an eviction moratorium is because a couple of things are going on. You know, one, we've got families who have been displaced, not only by COVID, but wildfire or other crises that may be more temporary. But that there is more than half a billion dollars, I think I'm not misspeaking, that's a huge number in federal rent assistance dollars coming to Oregon. And that will take some time for those dollars to reach landlords to do the reimbursement of back rent. So if there are, if there are sort of take rate numbers out there, I don't know them, but I will try to find that out for you. So just know that those, that's been embedded in the conversation. Great question. I'll just kind of move ahead to the rest. We've got House Bill 3115. This is the bill pertaining to folks experiencing homelessness who may choose to camp on public property. You all received briefings from me about this previously. Just wanted to let you know that it just passed the House on party lines and has gone to the Senate Housing and Development Committee. So it's still, still moving. And then this is, these two next bills are still in the homelessness range. These are two supersiting bills. I know you've heard about this before. We had the Speaker's Bill that she reintroduced from the 2020 session about supersiting for constructing shelters. There's also House Bill 3261, which our county has not taken a position or weighed in on, but I just wanted to let the board know that this is a similar supersiting bill, but for the conversion of a building to the use of an emergency shelter, right? So this had the bill been in effect already, would have mitigated the work that our housing authorities have been doing with the city of Hillsborough with the transportation department to get all the necessary paperwork for that project to earn key funding. I talked to Andy Smith from AOC today, and it sounds like the latest number is that if our, our, our project goes through, it will be the 11th that the state has, and there is a goal of doing 18 in total. So this bill is hopefully designed to make sort of the next seven have an easier time with their mandates process. And then finally, I wanted to touch on House Bill 3124, again pertaining to homelessness and trying to give folks some certainty and protection amid the public health crisis. This just increases the time that our law enforcement officials must post a written notice before removing homeless individuals from an established camp from the current 24 hours to 70. Of the, the really big funding ask that we have, the government relations is committed to bringing home for your board and your adopted priorities. These are the policy bills that are still out there that have been taking up most of mine or your department's time. So I wanted to bring them to your attention and make sure we're on the right track or if you have any questions. All right, that's good. Thank you, Chair Harrington, for your support and board as well.
Or clerk, if we can go back or go forward two slides. There we are. So I'm going to be very brief here in terms of the community corrections update. The two bills that we care about in regard to community corrections at this point, one is House Bill 5004. This is the Department of Corrections Budget Bill. This is where we are asking for that $25.6 million budget ask for community corrections. That then coupled with Senate Bill 497, this provides funding for certain domestic violence misdemeanors. So both of these bills made it survive committee. They actually both received bipartisan support. I'm flagging that because many conservatives, many Republicans are simply voting no on everything because they're unhappy with the current state affairs, the state legislatures. The fact that we were able to get Republican support on this, to me, is an achievement. I think it speaks to truly the quality of the policy, specifically embedded in Senate Bill 497. I mean, what are we talking about? We're talking about best practices when it comes to supervising people who are convicted of domestic violence. That's important stuff. Community corrections generally, I want to thank Commissioner Willie for giving awesome testimony on 5004. Also want to thank Chair Harrington for speaking with our tri-chairs about this funding. You know, because we're getting to that budget buzzsaw, if you will, there's always going to be a little bit of pushback from our budget folks in regard to community corrections because they want to use the budget as a carrot for us to do better work, right? They want to get better outcomes so they can get a gold star as well. So we have heard some, some feedback around concerns around recidivism, concerns around having more manageable outcomes, concerns around counties, let's just say, propping up their own programs and community corrections that weren't actually mandated by statute, and then those having questionable effects from recidivism. I just want to flag, it's been nearly 20 years since community corrections has been funded adequately. 2006 is the last time the cost study was funded at its full face value. You couple that with the fact that, yes, the population is slowly getting a little bit smaller, but the risk of that population has been increasing. So we haven't been funded, we have a riskier population that has a higher risk profile. I would be willing to wager that there is a higher proclivity for recidivism. And yes, the uptick in recidivism was statewide, but again, there are many causal factors here. And I will be doing my, my best job possible reminding our legislators of that fact. So I am cautiously optimistic about community corrections funding, and I will leave it there on these two bills. If there's any questions? Not seeing any, okay? The next bill is a bill that I'm kind of excited to talk to you about because this is a bill that our community partners came to us to receive our support. So three that are, just come to my mind, Adelante, San Francisco, Latino Network. Latino Network is the main sponsor of this or one of the main proponents of this bill. They reached out to us and they said, hey, this comports with one of your adopted legislative guiding principles. And it does, and I'll remind you of that principle. That principle is to enhance local efforts to serve the diverse population of Washington County in an equitable and inclusive manner. So how does 3265 do that? 3265 does that because as you recall, the voters passed a sanctuary law statewide for the state of Oregon, right? 3265 essentially takes that and strengthens it. It gives, it completely does not allow for the use of local resources in relation to federal immigration enforcement. It also prohibits for-profit entities from running immigration detention centers. It also creates cause of action against local actors who use local resources to take action on federal immigration enforcement. So really, it's strengthening that sanctuary sort of promise that we made, and that's, that's the name of the bill, the Sanctuary Promise Bill. So this has been added to your bill tracker. We are in a position of support about this, and our community partners are just so elated that we're, we're putting our weight behind this. Any questions there? Fantastic. Next slide, please. Any discussion or questions? Fantastic. Well, thank you, board. I'm so happy to yield back 20 minutes to you. Thank you for all your support.
Well, I will thank you all in advance. You've been working really hard up to this point. Now, I realize that you have some dates in May where it'll be full-out sprint to the end of session. But I also want to recognize that you're still in a pretty intense time with the work that you're doing, and I appreciate that. And we'll look forward to hearing more in our upcoming sessions together so we can help you with clarity if we need to provide it or more often than not, it's the case of you helping us understand how all those wheels are turning and how we can be best informed and help, to whatever degree we can, get, get bills of interest across the finish line. So keep up the good work and thank you for staying healthy. Great. Well, seeing nothing else from commissioners, we'll move on then to the CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund final report. Welcome, Jack Leong and Aaron Doyle. Aaron, you're back.
Aaron is right with us. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and commissioners. For the record, my name is Jack Leong, Director of Support Services, Chief Financial Officer. And as you mentioned, Chair, accommodating me today is Aaron Doyle, County Administrative Office Government Relations Manager. And we are excited to be here to provide you the Corona Relief Fund final report and really to provide you the programmatic information that we have collected together. And we will get started to the next slide, please. So just as a quick reminder, at the very beginning of the implementation of this CARES Act CRF program, the board has established two goals. The number one goal is to provide the most positive impact for the most amount of people. And the second goal is to maintain adherence to the CARES Act and guidelines provided by the U.S. Department of Treasury. Next slide, please. In addition to the two goals, there were also four principles identified. And in the carryout of the program, every department that has been involved has stayed very close to these four principles. And that includes protect public health, stabilize local economy, support community-based organizations, and mental health and community psyche. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the original allocation and the, the final allocation actually for the CARES Act grants and program allocations. And each one of these bubbles relates to a specific program, which we will go into details in the later part of this slide. But this is an overall view of all of the programs that has been implemented under CARES Act CRF, and that falls under one of the four principles. Next slide, please. So we'll start with the dollars perspective first. We have all these programs that's implemented. And then in this chart, it shows a little bit of the allocation versus the actual spending. In this chart, the blue bars on each program represents the allocation of the board. And then the orange bar shows, demonstrates the actual spending for each program. As you can see, that some of the programs went a little bit over than the original allocation. Some of the other programs that when we went a little bit under. And that is all attributable to the nimbleness and the flexibility. Everybody that has been involved, especially your board and the county administrative office, that were able to reallocate programs and then dollar amounts toward the end of the CRF to ensure that we really utilize the full benefit of the allocation of this federal funding. So to put things in perspective, although that there are up and downs within each program, in the end, our total spending equals to the total allocation amount for the entire CRF, which is the total is $104,660,475. Next slide, please. And then starting from this slide, we're going to go into a little bit of program, and then I will transition to Aaron a little bit. But just to start off on the protect public health side, we have original allocation of $54 million. And then over time, we have realized some savings in this program and then did some final adjustments. The final allocation in this program is $40.9 million plus any underspent amount from the other programs. And then in the end, our actual spending in this program is $46.8 million. Next slide, please. And just because of the protect public health portion has a couple of major programs that's under that, the bigger umbrella. So we decided to add in a finer breakdown in the protect public health that includes the Emergency Operations Center, Contact Tracing, Respite Center, other public health costs, COVID-19 leaves, telecommuting support, continuity of operations, as well as other qualifying COVID-19 costs. And the total of that expenditure totals $46 million, $46.8 million. And then this chart shows a breakdown of how that total dollar breaks, breaks out. Next slide, please. And on this slide, I will transition to Aaron as she has been a great help in collecting all this data, putting it in the final report, adding them into this PowerPoint presentation to really bring this very important information to your board and to the public. So I would like to, I would like to pass it on to Aaron to walk us through the programmatic information for each one of this program.
Thanks, Jack. Actually, if we could go back a slide. We were gonna, I wrote some notes on slide seven, so.
All right, so back one slide.
Perfect. Thank you. So just to break down these numbers a little bit more, let me tell you what I've been working on with Jack and Philip and about 17,000 other county employees who have provided us with all of the support, information, random data inquiries, quotes, and things of that nature. We have put together a report that is now available on the county's website in its finalized form called Lift Us Up, Keep Us Going. Because that's what these CRF dollars were really used to do. Through those federal investments, we were able to follow the, the guiding principles and requirements of, of the board to lift as much of the community up as we could across the board. And one of those things that we did in the report is try to put some numbers together about what the dollars provided to the community. With, and that report, as I said, was, is now on the commissioner's website. So you can read the full report. So what, what this presentation does is provide a little bit of that information. But if you want to read more of the metrics we've come up with, you can find it there. And I commend it to you and to Washington County residents writ large so that they know exactly how we invested those dollars. But one caveat to all of that is that CRF dollars were required originally, we spent by the end of 2020. And we were never sure that it was going to be extended until the day that bill finally passed and was signed by the president and was extended, which was about 12 days before they were supposed to be extended. So Washington County worked very hard to comply with that 1230, 2020 deadline. And so all of this data tries to reflect that cutoff point, which is when the county had finalized its allocation slightly before that so that all of those dollars were set and, and spent or spent to the community agency or partner that we were providing them to. So all of the data that's provided in the report reflects that 1230 information. But on this slide, I just wanted to break down some metrics examples that come from these dollars. So under the EOC or the Emergency Operations Center, at its peak, there were 201 county employees working under that umbrella, focused solely on response to the COVID crisis. That's a pretty sizable use of the EOC for an extended period of time. Under contact tracing, we've, our contact tracing program reached out to over 12,000 people to notify them of their potential exposure to COVID-19 and provided more than 6,000 hours in interviews and education processes to those folks that they had done outreach to. The respite center were used to place 301 people, providing them somewhere safe and secure to isolate if they were either diagnosed or suspected of having COVID-19. That's an example of some of the metrics we did provide in that report. So next slide, please.
Aaron, I have a quick question.
Please, Commissioner, fine.
The COVID-19 leave, is that just for Washington County-specific staff? Or does that, what does that include?
I'm gonna look to Jack to answer that.
I can speak to that. The short answer is yes, it is for Washington County staff. And this particular leaves are the leaves that we are providing to staff in compliance with the federal regulations of the emergency famila and emergency OFLA, which we did actually create our own policy, which is in accordance with the federal leave policy that came out.
Thank you.
So not only did protecting public health come under county obligations, we have a lot of local government partners that also had to protect public health. and how they respond and continue to interact with the community. They were partners in all of our efforts as well. So we allocated 14.7, I'm less exact than Jack is, to all of the cities and special districts who were interested in receiving some of these funds. If we did not provide these funds, there was no direct source of dollars from the federal government down to these local governments entities. And we were concerned that the state wouldn't have enough to truly meet their needs. So we set aside dollars from our bucket to make sure that they could be reimbursed for similar types of costs that they had. So next slide, please. So this breaks down the total reimbursement that we were able to provide to the cities and special districts within Washington County. I will note that the number 14.7 does not, if you did the math and added up all these columns, does not match because that 14.7 includes the way we did the community psyche million-dollar set aside. It's reallocated it into this bucket for purposes of getting it out to our partners. But for the purposes of the report, we kept it separate because it was a separate goal and a separate plan. But key here to me is that every dollar that was requested for reimbursement was paid out to our community partners. So these numbers reflect not our decisions, but their decisions. These funds were used for all things that were CRF appropriate. So things like personal protective equipment, facility changes so that they could continue to see the public, respond to emergencies as necessary. So other similar expenses to that that they were being reimbursed for, we use them as partners in other programs as well. Those dollars are reflected elsewhere. So, next slide, please. Oh, Commissioner Willie. You're muted.
You only wish. The it's only temporary. The number that jumped off the page on me on this one was Twelton Hills Parks and Rec. Larger than our cities, well, it's the largest number on the page here. So could you give me some insight as to where that money was spent?
I can do that. So at the beginning of the pandemic or throughout the first part of the pandemic, being a fairly large regional parks provider, TVF, THPRD actually did a lot of facilities update to their parks amenities. So when you look at that, there's actually, as Erin mentioned, that there's a lot of facilities updates. There's a lot of safety measures that's being applied. So THPRD spent a lot of the allocation toward that area. And then in the later part of the pandemic, we were really assisting the community to stood up childcare programs or summer camp programs. And then there are actually a lot of those programs that's focused more on folks that's really children that's not going to school. So there's a lot of that resource that's dedicated to those programs. And all in all, THPRD has been a really close partner with Washington County in responding to the pandemic in the scope of work that they have provided. And I also want to mention that if you look at the chart, you know, the number is very different from cities to districts. And I just want to reiterate Erin's point is throughout multiple iterations of reallocation, we were able to meet 100% of each jurisdiction's need and request to support their COVID operations.
Great.
Hope that answers the question.
You bet.
Thank you. So the next big bucket of funds went to stabilize the local economy principle. And this, what ended up being 15.7 million dollars was spread across a number of different programs to work towards meeting the needs of a variety of different interest holders in what we decided was the local economy. That was not just businesses. It wasn't just the workforce. It was a lot of our partners. So this slide kind of breaks down a number of different pieces that are included in the report about dollars that were given, primarily focused on what we generally think of as the economy, the businesses and the workforce that exist in Washington County. So in the report, you'll see the way we structured it is we broke down each program and kind of gave information about who we partnered with. Because one thing I will say, having worked very closely with the business work group or the, was we could not, as a county, do the work we have done without partners outside of the county. So each section is broken down with who our programmatic partners were, what type of entities or individuals were prioritized, what the basic requirements of the program were so that folks, for example, a grant program, what are the requirements to be eligible, and provide information on the results. So for our grants program, we partnered very closely with MISO and all of the cities that wanted to participate in a grants program independently. So we allocated a number of dollars to the cities that wanted to provide a grants program. And then we set aside a certain amount for grants within unincorporated Washington County, as well as smaller cities that decided it would be better if the county just ran the program for them. Those cities included businesses within Durham, Forest Grove, Gaston, King City. And we also decided to include the small portion of Wilsonville that sits within Washington County because of some complicated decisions the state made, basically saying that if Clackamas County spent any money in Wilsonville or Wilson, in Wilsonville portion of Washington County, it caused all kinds of alarms to them. So we said that those businesses are vital as well, and they're in Washington County, so we will support them. So we were able to provide over 1,000 grants. Most of them are around $3,000 in size. And those went to smaller businesses on average. And the folks that had less than two employees are really who we kind of targeted with, who we ended up seeing a lot of requests from. And we unfortunately couldn't get dollars to everyone because we spread as far as we could to as many folks as we could. Our cities were able to reach businesses within their jurisdictions. So 1,100 is pretty good for unincorporated Washington County. The city allocations in the report are not broken out because by businesses impacted because they combined with other resources that they were able to procure and made bigger grant programs than what we were able to pay for. So I did not take the time to break their numbers apart. Instead, I would refer you to the cities' websites for that information. Next on this slide is the Business Recovery Programs. This was a partnership done with Adalante Mujeres, the Beaverton Chamber of Commerce, Hillsborough Chamber of Commerce, and Twelton Chamber of Commerce, where we basically provided assistance to the businesses based on what they wanted. These partners reached out, they did education for us. They did assistance, helping people access either our grant program or federal grant programs. We were able to provide direct consultation to a number of businesses over 2,000 hours. These folks were hired on by those four entities specifically to do this work for us. So this was not their regular chamber work. This was in addition to what they are already doing. In addition, the BRCs became an important partner for the distribution of personal protective equipment to businesses who could put in requests. The county would provide the PPE and the BRCs would be a centralized location to get that, those assets out into the community. So those, those continued to work but not using CRF dollars. So these numbers reflect what we were able to provide using those CRF dollars through the end of 2020. Finally, on this slide, businesses aren't the only ones impacted when the economy is impacted. The workforce is also. So we had the City of Hillsborough and PCC come forward to us with an idea. And we said, that's a great investment. Let's also bring in workforce system, Work Systems Incorporated, and really do some dedicated set aside for workforce redevelopment and retraining as we recognized that some of the job losses were potentially permanent. But there were still areas in the county where workers were being hired and could be hired safely to do the jobs and were necessary. So you can see through that allocation of dollars, we got a pretty good return on investment with 768 community members being served, including 138 youth in particular. There were a number of different job training courses between Work Systems Inc. and PCC that were able to be completed or at least started. In addition, our partners were, Work Systems was able to provide the support services necessary. So perhaps paying rent while someone goes through the education process, making sure people's basics needs are met while they get retrained to do new jobs. So this was a pretty powerful set of information. And in the report, that's on pages 18 through 20, which tells you just how much information we gained from those partners in really assisting folks get retrained so that they could find ways to continue working despite shutdowns, slowdowns, and restructuring of businesses. So are there any questions here?
Erin, this is Roy. I appreciate the workforce component. That's what it's all about. But have we teased out or been able to tease out the number of businesses who, even though we provided this kind of money and they've gotten a number of other sources are still in business? Do we know the, the number who have no longer, are no longer open?
Commissioner Rogers, unfortunately, we don't have that breakdown of businesses that have permanently closed. Part of that is we just don't have business licensing for every business within Washington County. So we can't track that. We don't have a means of tracking that information without asking the state to provide it to us for a fee. So we haven't tracked that information specifically of who has unfortunately permanently closed the doors. It's an impact, both of the impacts.
My suggestion might be not to spend a lot of money or go through a lot of effort because I know you have limited resources and limited time. But it'd be interesting to query some of our chambers and just say, in spite of our best efforts, what's the outcome? I always like to know what we bought, you know, after all said and done. So if we could ever get that information, it'd be interesting.
Erin, if I could jump in a little bit. You're exactly correct, Roy. It would be good to know that information. Unfortunately, as Erin said, we in unincorporated, Worthing County don't have business permits. That is one of the things that's on Matt's to-do list over the next period of time. It's a pretty good long to-do list, so we'll wait and see. But that would be the only way that we could be able to actually come back around and determine that. We can, however, reach out to the cities because they all do have business permit requirements. And we could actually go to the BRCs as well. I doubt they would be able to give us much of that information. This will be something probably that we will be able to get a bunch clearer picture in the rearview mirror as we get further down the road. Six months from now, nine months from now, we'll be able to see, I think, what the damage was from the standpoint of businesses that were not able to reopen and then try and match up some of that to the grant programs that we did. Remember, we probably got grant money to, I don't know, 10 or 15%, maybe 20% of our businesses, just because of the sheer numbers and the money that we didn't have to do that with. So that would, that'd be an interesting project. We'll see what we can come around backdoor on this next round and see if we can get some more information on that.
Yeah, and to be frank, I'm not sure that we know the full ramifications of COVID because COVID unfortunately is not gone yet. So, and we'll see what other information is out there. And I, of course, am willing to volunteer Matt to help us with anything that we need economic development related because he's not on the call.
Commissioner Fai. Erin, if I may add, the other side of those, the question is, especially since the funding was focused on equity, to really know, you know, both, not only the positive impact of it, but also the negative impacts of it and how much equity was centered? And how many of those businesses were BIPOC businesses? Or, and how much of the money did those companies receive? So it'd be really good information to know that demographics as well. Especially from the cities, they should be able to know, hopefully. I do understand unincorporated areas don't have the business licensing, but I think cities might be a different case. So I'll be interested to know, you know, of the businesses that we have assisted, how many of them were identified as a BIPOC businesses? And then how much percentage were they, did they get or receive?
Actually, MISO has that information or a good portion of that information, I think, the FISA. So, and we were trying to track that during the process of going through the grant programs and all of that. That was always a criteria that we put on the grant program. I think MISO might be able to provide not only the information from the grant programs, we ran through them, but also the cities' programs that were ran independent of us. And so we could, we could probably reach out to MISO and at least get some general ideas on that, realizing that, again, that was, that was one of our top criteria for grant money.
Yeah, and I will, I will also add to that. It was my intention to include that information in their overall report. And I seem to have left that set of numbers out. So I know that Philip is listening and perhaps we can do one finalized revision. So it is, because we did intentionally with our grant program, try to find ways in which we were sure to incorporate that equity lens that, that the equity resolution encapsulated for the entire county's work. And we worked very specifically with community-based organizations to do the outreach to make sure that it's, because it's not just about how you target the dollars. It's making sure that people are aware of them, I think, is one of the key ways in which you can be successful in being equitable in the business community. So we worked with a number of partners. So thank you for that reminder that that information should be included in the report.
That criteria on the money that we were working with the cities on as well, so.
Yeah, we just don't have great data from the cities, unfortunately. Next slide, please.
Looks, Chair Harrington has a question.
Sorry, sorry. I'm missing five at a time.
Not to be ignored. So I'll just close with saying, this is a really great example of how with the full CRF program, we took a bit of a divide and conquer, so to speak, aspect. And I, once again, I can't thank enough Commissioners Willie and Treese for taking on this huge program. And yes, there were many staff members that put these dollars into action. But there was a huge volume of work that you all did. And I really appreciate how you followed through on all this work for us. It more than exceeded, I think, the community positive outcome than we were originally hoping for. And aren't we fortunate that we'll be able to look to the ARP funds now to provide some additional support? So thank you very much. Thank you, Erin.
One quick point to that, thank you Chair for your comments. And also Erin was part of that team. The team was great. And we met every, every week, sometimes twice a week and really, really worked. There's no question, there's a lot of work that went into it and the staff was fabulous. So thank you Chair for your comments. And I'm so pleased that we can use this structure moving forward.
Thank you all. Next slide. Next, one other important piece of the economic impact that COVID-19 had is the ability for folks who saw significantly, significant reductions in their paychecks, make sure that they stay home and make sure that they're able to pay for their utilities. So in two different buckets that kind of are combined into one on this slide, we did a housing program and a utility program. And at this point in time, you'll see this slide shows exactly how many folks have been able to take advantage of those programs. We partnered with Community Action, Proud Ground, and the Willamette West Habitat for Humanity with the Housing Assistance Program. And we partnered with Community Action again for the Utilities Program. And we, we've been able to allocate those dollars to pay for these vital things where people, in order to stay home and to wash your hands, need to have access to them. So while not every dollar has been allocated out yet, we do anticipate that over the future, that Community Action will be able to fully utilize the 4.8 million dollars in rent assistance. And all of that will be completed. There was a significant smaller amount of money that went out for the Utility Assistance Program just based on what the needs were. So that's really the story of this slide. Jack, did you have something to add?
Sure, I just wanted to add that to be.
Sure, I just wanted to add that to be, in addition to all the external partners, Clean Water Services are uh close by sister organization, really, has been working with us hand in hand in this utility assistance program and really helped facilitate and coordinated a lot of the efforts connecting with the cities and their utility providers. So I I just wanted to to make sure that Clean Water Services is definitely a part of our partner, significant partner on this program.
Well, and yeah, if I could jump in too, I mean, I I didn't hear this, Erin, in in the business part in the previous slide, but Clean Water Services was, has been instrumental still in providing PPE for our businesses, free PPE, and um providing us with a a resource. And it was really competitive and and Diane Tanaguchi Dennis and and Mark Chalkers and that that whole team uh really did a great job with that as well. So kudos again to Clean Water Services for that. And then in the Utility Assistance, again, I didn't, I didn't know if you touched on this, but that was one of the last programs we did. We have partnered with Northwest Natural and PGE to provide uh several hundred businesses that were on the cusp of losing uh their utilities for their businesses, even if they were open or if they needed to reopen, uh they were not going to be able to do that unless they were caught up. So we partnered with him to take care of that. So lots of partnerships here, I think, would be um and lots of collaboration would be the key fo- focus for me.
And that does remind me to provide this caveat about the report. It is not a hundred percent minutia detail. It is a, is it is a broad overview of the work that we did using as much metrics as we could to 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 tell the story, but we probably didn't hit every exact um programmatic element. For example, COVID leave is not listed in the report, but it is listed as an expenditure that we had. It's just, we wanted to tell the story, big picture, as much as we could, without making the report onerous to read. Um so with that, I'll go to the next slide, please. The next slide, uh the, everyone is included in the economy and that includes those folks who are without a house. And we, as a county and this board, very much intentionally said, everyone in our community needs assistance and we need to be able to make sure that we can keep people safe um in the situations that they're in. So we put two point nine million dollars aside for and then spent one point five million dollars on a number of different programs to assist the um the houseless population. Um this chart has been updated in the report, which will you'll, you can see on page thirty. Um when we created the slideshow uh originally off the draft, um we were working with uh some numbers that um under winter shelters combined a number of different funding resources. But fortunately, Annette was able to break down those finances. So the the chart in the report shows um a small reduction in the number of folks that were served in the winter shelters as a result of CRF dollars as a reflection of the fact that we were able to disaggregate the dollars within that chart. Um but overall, um these, these programs provided the opportunity not just to keep folks safe um living where they were, but also to ensure that we have the ability to provide education opportunities, to offer assistance to move people from houselessness into per- more permanent um um homes. Um I I will say that the average length of stay in across all of these programs is around seventeen days. And we were able to move five percent of the folks that we touched in these pro- programs into a permanent form of housing. Um that might not feel like much, but that's a number of people who we were able to not just address their COVID situation, but to address their overall situation, which I think is a pretty profound investment of federal funding. Um our program partners for this project were the Project Homelessness Connect, Washington County, and the Family Promise of Toowallton Valley. Um these partners made it really um the only way it could work to meet the needs of the community and ensure not just that the houseless population was safe and secure, but that everyone around the houseless population could provide, had access um to provide services and to make sure that um we were able to really meet these folks where they were and keep them safe and reduce the spread of COVID within this population that is otherwise very difficult to serve. Um with that, next slide, please. Um next, one important component to having folks be able to go to work when schools are shut down, having them a play, have a place for their kids to go. Um so the board set aside and really prioritized childcare funding. Um we again partnered with MISO for this program. They ran the grants program for us. I'm really focused, our dollars and our investment in small childcare providers, folks who are a single FTE um working out of their homes. These are a little bit harder to identify and harder to protect, um especially when there you're bringing folks in and there's a COVID risk, how to do that safely um and how to maintain what is already a scarce service across the the county. And I think the the thing that stands out to me of the information we got back from the childcare providers themselves who responded to a survey that the county did after allocation is that ninety-nine percent of the recipients that responded to our survey remain in business at the end of the year. Because if they did not remain in business, it would be even harder for employees to find ways to go back to work with different schedules and not have their kids um someplace safe and protected. So Commissioner Treese.
I just want to say, in in this category, I think that we got such great help from um uh our inside folks, Evan and others, but also big, big help from Community Action, from Catherine Gallion, from others who are frontline people in relationship to to knowing who these providers were. So that that to me was one of the big success elements of that, of this particular part of the program.
Um, next slide, please.
I'll add on this one, that I was, when I whiteboarded out additional funding for childcare, I think uh one of our staff members looked at me a little in disbelief. Like, yeah, of course it could be used, but that's, you're asking us to really scale things up. And I was like, yes, please, because this is underlying infrastructure that our community members need. And I kept pushing and pushing as it was needed. Uh but this is where I really want to thank our staff for being willing to be pushed and to take that risk. Uh, you know, I'm, I, I do the work to find the funding, to help enable these programs and these community results. But the results won't be achieved without the follow-through from staff and our community partners. So I'm forever grateful for that uh because we've been very successful with all aspects of this program because of that work. So just hats off to staff.
Um, next, we also have school district partners who also aren't direct recipients of CRF dollars. Um we were really lucky to be a a direct recipient. Um and um through the efforts of this commission, the partnership with our school districts was able to stretch these dollars to make sure not just as the end of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year looked really different than the start of it, the starts and continuation of the twenty twenty school year um through the fall, where will we reopen, will we not reopen? How are we going to reach these kids? How do we make sure that kids are able to continue their education? Given that maybe not everybody has the best internet access at home. Maybe um there are some students who need hands-on assistance. We can't just rely on computers for everyone. Um there was a lot of use that these dollars got, um some examples of um you know, one point six reimbursement for childcare costs was not just for um the employees of the school district, but also for children that would otherwise be in school. Um that providing that childcare meant that they had access, stable access to the remote learning. And they weren't traditionally in childcare because they were traditionally in school. Um making sure that those childcare providers were able to help and and understood the technology. So um around two point seven million dollars supported comprehensive distance learning. Um one point one million dollars went to food assistance because many students depend upon school lunches, um school breakfasts um for their, their, their sustenance. So these dollars were spent by the school districts in in manners directed by them. Um so our school district partners decided how they could best meet the needs of their students where they were. In in the report, there's a a beautiful graphic. Um this is where I'm going to just give a shout out to Sherry, who's done an incredible amount of work, taking the data that I hand her and making it look readable, um but also understandable and kind of show the spread um geographically of where these dollars really went and who was impacted as a result. Um and that um that map is on page twenty-four of the report, so bounced around a little bit in the report. Um but with that, next slide, please. So the support of community-based organizations was a separate pot of funds um that were set aside of five point two five million dollars to support those community-based organizations um within Washington County. And there are a lot of them. And the one thing that dries up when you can't hold a fundraiser is funds. Um so working with our community engagement program to do the outreach and community action um as a partner, we were able to really get the word out and and share our dollars with these vital resources for the community. Um using their recommendations of the Oregon Community Foundation, sorry, gave the wrong name earlier, Oregon Community Foundation, um ran this grant program for us. And they broke down to five different types of um community-based organizations that were being looked at. Um health and wellbeing, livability, arts and culture, economic vitality, and education-based CBOs. Um and so this is the breakdown of how the funds went out. Um their terminology was either culturally specific or culturally responsive organizations. Um these are ones that meet our community where they are or have um programs that are focused on traditionally just um disinvested in communities and providing services that are culturally responsive or specific to that that group. So we had about six point eight million dollars in requested funds and were able to uh put out about five million dollars in awards. And so I, next slide, please. This slide breaks down examples of what a health and wellbeing CBO is or an arts and culture um type of program, what services they provide. But it also shows the width of um and breadth of the geographic spread of where these services are provided across the the county. There's at least one in every district. Some provide um county-wide services, some reach beyond the county, but these dollars were spent within the county. So just wanted to kind of show examples here, um breaking that information out a little bit further to show exactly the types of programs where we were able to keep at least moving forward through twenty twenty so that they could be around in twenty twenty-one, they, when they can reopen, or were able to tailor their services to meet the new physically-distanced standards, um but keeping us not socially-distanced and keep us as a, as a community in a, in a lot of ways. So uh next slide, please, unless there's questions about the CBO fundings. Okay, next slide then. Um, finally, this breaks out the mental health and community psyche, which um some of those programs are met by our CBOs, but really, we wanted to make it an intentional investment in making people feel connected. Um know who their community are, um not feel like they have to there that they're stuck and no one in their community cares anymore. So we were able to partner with um Twalton Hills Park and Recreation, Hillsborough Park and Rec. Um uh Tigerd Parks Department and the and we recently signed, uh our, towards the end of the year, we signed an agreement with the Sherwood Parks Department as well. Um these dollars have all been allocated out to those agencies, but the work of those dollars have paid for continue into this new year. Um because uh the way they're meeting the community is not just what's happening in the winter. They needed to continue into the spring as as we emerge from all of this, we still need to feel connected. So um each of these pictures actually represents an event that was paid for with CRF dollars. And I had notes on what they were and then I set them aside after the presentation and I found them again because I just remembered to do that now. Um but THPRD, um you know, is is a major partner in all of this. Um but the other parks departments, and they, THPRD also partnered with the City of Beaverton, I should, I should mention that as well. Um a total of, oh, I had to do math really fast. Thirty-two events had been paid for by the time um this report was put together. Um and there are more that are planned in the future. Some of those, um it, once you flip through the report on page thirty-six, again, a list of examples of the types of programming that were brought forward using this funding. Some of it was culturally specific so that there was specific outreach to various populations within the county. Um but, you know, we had the Adaptive Mobile Recreation um program that was free recreation programming for people experiencing disabilities in partnership with community-based organizations. Um there were welcoming walks that were put together using these funds, which was a free organized walk happening as part of the National Welcoming Week to highlight the important contributions of immigrants and refugees and to reaffirm our place as a welcoming and inclusive community. Um, we hosted the, uh, or these dollars paid for the Community Conversations on RISH, which was um brought national trainers and speakers and facilitators to train and facilitate dialogue for community members around these questions. Um in Tigerd, we had Operation Hope, which um partnered with local community members to coordinate um those experiencing homelessness and isolation by partnering nonprofits to donate small care packages to do that type of outreach, including, which included things like hand sanitizers, socks, wool hats, small treats, and some sort of personalized items. So those are the kinds of community, mental health, community psyche programs that were brought together by these dollars. Um, next slide, please. And then finally, this one should probably be up in the uh Economic Stability Program. But internally, we took a look at um some of the resources that we had and how we could better spend them. And we recognized that we, as a county, do licensing for the food interrism industry. So we actually have a register of businesses that we license and they pay for those licenses. Um so they're being shut down and one of the primary targets of um the COVID restrictions has been on these industries because that's where people travel and spread and get in close contact with one another. So um we set aside one point five million dollars to those that we licensed through these programs and said, as we handed them their um license renewal paperwork and said, we recognize that there is an impossibility here for many of you to pay these bills because you need to remain licensed in order to do business, but your business has been significantly restricted. Here is a low-barrier um grant program if you would like to participate in it. And we were able to help a number of businesses within Washington County. So um twenty, six hundred and twenty-eight businesses that included seven hundred and forty facilities, facilities being like a hotel with a restaurant, that's two facilities. So they have a hotel license, they have a a restaurant license. So it might be that they got a a grant for both the hotel and the restaurant. Um and you can see here what the average uh grant of those facilities were. Um so that is how we spend your money. Um the the keep, the the report is, has more details. Um even though it's not every dime that was spent. And from here, I'm going to turn it back to Jack because um he has some follow-up conclusionary comments he would like to make, I think.
Thank you, Erin, and thank you so much for providing um the major part of this, each program, and then focusing on the community impact because I have been in front of your board to discuss the numbers quite a few times. I'm sure that you've been eager to hear some of this community impacts that this program has turned into and how this important financial resources turned into actual community services that is actually in the community. Uh so next slide, please. So this next slide is really more for the public's purpose, is uh is our final spending. So essentially, the same chart, uh but except for it's not allocation, it's actually where we actually spend these dollars, which are very important. Um next slide, please. And then I just wanted to bring us back to the reporting requirement to the Treasury. And then we have come, at the time of this report being prepared, And then we have come, at the time of this report being prepared, uh, this slide deck being prepared, we have completed a three report that consists of, uh, uh, the ones that's due in September twenty twenty, the ones that's due in October, and then the last one that's due in January. And then since we're in April twentieth, I'm happy to report, we also completed the April twelfth report, which for Washington County is the final report, uh, for CRF. So we are successfully closed out at the county on this program and have, uh, really stored away all the documentations and ready for next year's audit. And based on our audits this year, um, from the experiences of the first part of the program, we feel that we're prepared and confident that we will have a clean audit on this program, uh, comes, uh, next year. And, uh, next slide please. We will actually, um, in fact, we'll skip over the next slide because these questions were relevant at the last time, uh, when the slide deck was prepared, but they are no longer relevant at this moment. And lastly, on this slide, I just wanted to say that while COVID is still with us, while we still have a long way to go in terms of a COVID response and recovery, but this really, from this program perspective, is a really good time to take a pause and thank each other for everybody's partnership, everybody's collaboration. And then I, if I may read out a list of folks that's, uh, you know, the group that's in, involved, obviously it starts with your board and the county administrative office with the leadership that's into each one of these programs. And then we have internal departments that has been in every step along the way of the collaborations, the coordinations on all of this program. And essentially every department, every office in Washington County has participated on this, some more than the others, but every department has participated. And then we have all these external partnerships from the cities, the special districts, the CBOs and our vendors that has been, uh, on contract with us. And everybody really came together responding to the COVID nineteen. And in addition, we have our community that has put the trust, the patience and the support to the county to do this important work. And let's not, also not forget our federal delegations, our state representatives, our partners in this other level of governments that has been a part of this whole system. I feel that this is a moment, and, and again, I just wanted to reiterate, I am really only one piece of this large teamwork that the county has put together. And, uh, but I feel that, you know, for the opportunity of this report, this might be a moment that we can also take a pause to thank each other for our partnership and collaboration throughout the whole time. And with that, I want to thank you for your time and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So Chair Harrington, can I just share a little bit more information as well? So the work of Washington County is actually being recognized, uh, across the country. There's been, uh, this report has been shared with other cities and counties, um, through, uh, various networks that I have. We have communities that are reaching out and wanting to model business, the business recovery model in their ARPA funds. Um, also inquiries on how we've approached, um, not just a funding agreement with CPOs, but really working in partnership and listening to CBOs' needs and voices. And so I just wanted to share, um, that this report, the work of Washington County is, um, that word and that thankfulness is being spread outside of our boundaries.
Jack, two pieces of information from me, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, all right. Jack, and the rest may not be interested, just for me, if you could give me some information on two things. What was the percentage of money spent on salaries and benefits? And what was the FTE on that? Because I'm a little concerned that you take money away and all of a sudden there's a lot of things that may not transpire in the way of wages and benefits for peoples. I, I, I don't have a good, I know total dollars, but I don't have a handle on what that is.
Definitely, we have those, uh, back data and we can definitely provide those. I, I do want to say that, uh, you know, there, when you look at the dollar amount, there's definitely some salary and benefits that's, uh, provided dedicated to this program, but all of those are dedicated to the specific time, each staff and each FTE that's dedicated their work toward a program. So we, uh, at the county level, at the very early on, we did not take an indirect approach, basically to say, okay, we're going to charge a certain percentage for each program for the county service. We charged every staff's hours to each program. So we can actually, when it comes to audit or any public viewing, we can actually point, uh, each dollar of those salaries and benefits to a particular program's specific work, uh, to the hours.
Yeah, thanks for getting it, Brian.
No problem.
Yeah.
Any other commissioner questions or comments?
Commissioner, hi. Yeah, I have a comment, um, and maybe a, a little recommendation. Um, you know, I've been listening to the PowerPoint presentation and following along and I think, um, what it resonated with me was, and I don't think, Jack and Erin, this is your intentions, uh, but sort of our approach was really one size fits all and it's not. And there was a lot of data, equity data that's missing of this report. And I know in, in Washington County, um, uh, the population that's really been impacted negatively about this COVID at the, our Latinx community. And there isn't sort of a language or a focus that really elevates how we were able to mitigate that impact for that population. So I'm really concerned about that in our report and I hope to, um, and also, you know, the, the question I asked, and I think, uh, Commissioner Rogers was, uh, just asked as well. My question about the leave, you know, I think we need to have some language in the report around, um, because when, in the community, one of the biggest thing concern and really something that really detrimentally impacted the community that's been impacted was how there was no loss of wage coverage for, uh, some of the CRF money. Um, so, and here we have a lot of money dedicated to lease for, uh, internal staff and, and, you know, as staff specifically, but we weren't able to contribute to the community that we've been calling as a case or, uh, of contact to ask them to stay in their homes for two weeks. Uh, we, we, we didn't really have any money outside sending them to the state to go through the process of unemployment, uh, to cut.
Kind of that responsibility to do that. Um, but I, I would agree with you, we're talking about a two-year program, so we're going to be spreading it out a little bit more.
So Commissioner Willie, that's a fair point and I believe that all of our partner jurisdictions are very interested in how the community is planning or how the county is planning to spend the dollars and how that relates to their strategies. So there is still the overlap in conversations that I'm confident will occur as we move forward.
Well, I will finish up with a question, uh, for, for you, Jack and, and Erin, as you are the team spokespeople. Uh, al- along with Ms. Angie. So, um, here we are in April and I remember something like in the fall when we were thinking, oh, boy, we're coming to the end of the year by which we have to spend these dollars. And we hope that Congress as of twenty twenty-one will pass additional legislation to help us through the great unknown. Um, we know a little bit more about where we are at with COVID recovery as well as economic recovery, but we still have quite a ways to go. So you all have done an amazing job on this report and having videos and whatnot. I remember being concerned that our congressional, uh, delegation and their staff would have enough information from us in order to support their efforts for continued legislation. Well, now we have this gift of ARP without needing all the full report at least, though your results along the way helped fuel their efforts. Um, so my question is this, uh, have you had the oppo, have you perhaps had the opportunity yet to sync with the congressional delegation staff to see if they've been at least satisfied with the report out information, excuse me, that you've provided? Um, both draft report as well as the vignettes that you've shared on social, social media.
Um, I'm going to take a stab at this quickly because I see Jack looking at me via the video. Um, the feedback we've gotten from the, the delegation staff here in Oregon has been really positive and they've really appreciated. Despite, because we focused mostly on getting the feedback on, on the video vignettes that we've provided. Um, the, the, this full report, I don't think had been digested completely as they, they've moved on, no. Um, but as we share further, I, I do think that they've appreciated the, the story that we've been able to tell about how important those funds were, but also how important that next tranche of investment will be to the county and to the county community, um, not just the entity. Um, those stories are the stories that they then use in convincing their colleagues. Um, some of it came a little bit after the ARP was finalized, but we were right there in that sweet spot politically where we could say, we're, we're providing you with the exact soundbites you, you've asked for and, and that you've needed. Um, and I think that the appreciation has been there from, from staff that I've discussed it with.
Well, good job, good job. Thank you very much.
Yeah, can I just add to that, um, a learning and this is singing the praises of the GR team. The GR team did not just assume what our legislators needed. Um, the GR team took the time to reach out, um, and ask. And that's where the vignettes came in because they had indicated that's what would be the most powerful to tell the story. So it does speak to the quality of GR staff that we have.
Once again, thank you very much for being so excellent at what you do. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are coming up, uh, just after quarter till three. So we'll take a fifteen-minute break here and reconvene at two minutes past three. And, uh, then we'll finish up with the last item on the agenda, short-term rentals, open house survey results and next steps. Okay? Great, see you back here in fifteen, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you all hear me okay today? Oh, good. Okay, I had enlisted some tech support to help with my audio issues. I hope this helps. So for the record, I'm Stephen Roberts, Land Use and Transportation Director, and I'm joined today by Andy Back, who's our Planning and Development Services Manager, Teresa Cherniack, our Principal Community Planner, and Suzanne Savin, a Senior Planner who's working on this short-term rentals topic. So we have three things that we're hoping to achieve today. We want to just review with you prior staff recommendations and direction that we've received from the board on this issue to date. We'll summarize and review community feedback we received from an online open house survey. We had 326 responses, which was quite good, and a wide variety of feedback, which we'll walk through with you. And then we're looking to seek some additional direction from you as we continue to move this effort forward. Look forward to answering any questions that you have. And I think with that, I can turn it over to Suzanne. Are you going to walk us through?
Sure. Thank you, Stephen, and thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioners, Suzanne Savin, Senior Planner. Next slide, please. And so, short-term rentals as a refresher are often defined as a dwelling unit or portion thereof rented for a period of less than 30 days. And through initial research, staff is aware that the county has a number of short-term rentals in the unincorporated area, primarily in the urban area, but there are some in the rural area as well. And Host Compliance, a private short-term rental monitoring company, provided us, the county, with a snapshot of the number of short-term rentals in existence on February 20th of 2020. And at that time, it was approximately 567. But the number of short-term rentals can fluctuate from month to month in any locality. So more recently, Host Compliance has indicated that in January of 2021, there were about 400 short-term rentals in the unincorporated area of the county. Next slide, please. So as a recap, the county does not regulate short-term rentals. But we did receive concerns over the last five years from community residents, and the primary concerns were about neighborhood livability impacts, noise, parking, traffic, and trash, and requests for short-term rental regulations that would protect the community from negative impacts of short-term rentals. And in the work program for 2019, 2020, it identified preparation of a short-term rental issue paper as a Tier One task. And that issue paper was presented to the board on last February, February 2020. And it provided an overview on several topics about short-term rentals, and it ended with a recommendation from staff to regulate short-term rentals through a license approval process. Next slide, please.
Suzanne, I think this may be an incorrect PowerPoint. This one had said November, and I'm looking, and it doesn't appear to be the correct one.
You're, yeah, you're right, Teresa. I'm not sure this isn't the most current PowerPoint. That threw me off a little bit.
Yeah. So Michael, I don't know if you have the one for today, the April 20th, or if we should send that right now?
And I think I can open it up fairly quickly if I can share my screen and walk through it that way, or we can try to send it off to Michael. Okay, let me. Okay, now I've lost you all. Okay. Okay, are you seeing the title slide with April 20th on the cover?
I'm not seeing it yet.
Hmm. Okay. Looks like my screen froze. Let me try to send this to Michael.
I did send it to Michael.
Thank you.
If he's there. Also, send it to Chuck.
Hey, Kevin, can you stop his screen share? And then I can share it because I have the one from Teresa.
Okay, I may have to just shut my computer down. Everything has just frozen completely. Here.
Is there someone who can control back? There we go.
Yeah. So can someone remove me from the call?
Oh, we got it. You're good. So this slide, this story?
Um, one more, Michael.
Okay.
One more.
Good.
One. That's great. Terrific. Okay. So, so as I was indicating, we had a boardwork session in March 2020. We went over the issue paper, a short-term rental issue paper. The board concurred with the staff's recommendation to develop short-term rental regulations and a license process with the requirements addressing policy objectives to minimize likelihood of neighborhood, of community impacts, including party houses, noise, parking, and trash, and also to increase accountability of operators and provide a path to close down problem short-term rentals. Next slide. So at the November 2020 boardwork session, staff shared draft short-term rental requirements with the board. These included requirements for short-term rentals to be operated out of permanent dwellings and requirements for maximum occupancy limits on group events, noise, trash collection, requiring operators to provide their contact information to the surrounding properties within 300 feet, and then license revocation if the operator did not comply with the requirements. Next slide. Then we held a short-term rental online open house, and it was open from December 11th to January 8th of 2021. Stephen mentioned 326 people took the survey, and it broke down as 34% identified themselves as living near a short-term rental, 10% identified themselves as being a short-term rental owner or operator, and 50% identified themselves as being neither of those. We got quite a range of responses with some of the responses supporting the draft requirements and some opposing them, some saying short-term rentals should be allowed without any requirements or any license, and some saying that they shouldn't be allowed at all. And I'm going into a little more about the results on the next slide. So the first question was, how well will the proposed short-term rental requirements address community concerns? And this was a multiple choice ranging from one equals not at all to five equals very well. And 34% of the respondents thought the requirements would address community concerns well or very well, and 20% were neutral. 46% thought the requirements would not address community concerns well or well or not at all. But for those people that chose that option, they were given a supplemental question that asked, how do you think the proposed requirements can be improved? And that was an open-ended question where they could, you know, write whatever comments they had. And it was interesting to look at the results of that because it was very divergent in terms of the reasons why people gave or why they didn't think the requirements were satisfactory. So some of them indicated that they didn't think it was satisfactory because they thought short-term rentals should be allowed without a license. And some of them thought the requirements were too strict, and they enumerated which requirements they thought were too strict. Some of them thought the requirements were not strict enough, and they enumerated on that. And then some of them thought that short-term rentals should not be allowed at all, so that we shouldn't even be having this conversation about allowing them through a license. So there wasn't really, you know, one consensus or one, you know, opinion on why the requirements were not satisfactory. There are lots of different opinions about why they were not satisfactory. Next slide, please. So question two of the survey asked, how many onsite parking spaces should be required for short-term rentals? And there were three options given. 61%, the majority, chose the option, base the number of parking spaces on the approved number of occupants. And then 24% chose no parking, don't require any parking, and 15% chose require one parking space. The third question was, if a property has both a single-family house and an additional dwelling, should both be allowed to be licensed as short-term rentals? And 60% of the respondents said yes, both should be allowed to be licensed as short-term rentals. Next slide, please. So the last question was open-ended. It was, please share additional comments. And as our communications team staff person said, the way we designed the comment box would allow someone to drop basically war and peace into there. So they could, they could put comments of any length into there, and some people put paragraphs in. So it was very interesting to look at this. But the responses that we got to this question and also to the earlier open-ended question, how could the proposed requirements be improved? There were about six common themes that came out of these, these responses. One of the themes was that short-term rentals should be allowed without a license. And I should say too, before I start talking about the percentages here, when someone wrote a response, a lot of times their comments included more than one theme. So these percentages will not add up to 100%. So a second theme was that rural short-term rentals should be allowed, and 21% of the responses had that theme. A third theme was proposed requirements are too strict, and there were many examples given of the things that people thought that were too strict. And another, the fourth theme was proposed requirements are not strict enough. 15% of respondents had that in their comments. There were also some concerns about enforcement and revocation of the short-term rental license expressed by 4% of the responses. And lastly, a theme was that short-term rentals should not be allowed, and that was in 5% of the responses. So, next slide, please. So staff had three basic conclusions from the survey. One of them was that opinions were divided on whether the proposed requirements were too strict or not strict enough. And this may indicate perhaps that staff has found a good balance. We do want to note that the proposed requirements were modeled after the requirements of several other Oregon jurisdictions that have requirements for short-term rentals. The second conclusion is that many of the respondents want short-term rentals to be allowed. And staff comments about that are that, per council advice, we've proposed short-term rental requirements and a license process that would apply only to the urban unincorporated area. And that's been the source of most of the complaints about short-term rentals. And that's been the source of most of the complaints about short-term rentals. Council has advised staff that allowing short-term rentals through a license process in rural resource districts would conflict with land use allowances for those districts that are in state statutes. Staff has surveyed other counties on whether they allow short-term rentals in their rural districts and approaches have varied. But at least two counties, Benton and Hood River County, have taken the approach that we've proposed, which is that guest accommodations in rural districts would be accommodated through the land use application paths that are currently in existence. Wanted to note as well that in December 2020, Clackamas County adopted short-term rental requirements and their requirements allow short-term rentals in their rural districts through a license. After the adoption of those requirements, 1,000 Friends of Oregon appealed the regulations to the Land Use Board of Appeals on the basis that they conflict with state statutes and that appeal is still kind of in its early stages. So staff believes explicit allowance of rural short-term rentals should be viewed in the broader context, context of rural tourism. That's a separate topic, it's largely driven by state law and requires probably its own conversation. So, the third conclusion was that there were concerns expressed about how the short-term rental requirements could be enforced. And staff's comments on that are that a license fee for short-term rentals would be aimed at full cost recovery, including costs associated with code compliance. And a license fee amount would be set to fund three components of the short-term rental program. One of those would be the staff time to process the short-term rental license application. Another component would be a contract with a short-term rental monitoring company. And then a third component would be the code compliance for the short-term rentals. Next slide, please. So we had, staff had, would like to get some, or rather, if the board directs staff to continue developing short-term rental requirements and a license process, these are the anticipated next steps. Staff would prepare an ordinance to amend the county code. Because the ordinance will not amend the community development code, it will not be subject to planning commission hearings. But staff will brief the planning commission on the open house survey results and on the board's subsequent direction. An ordinance would be brought to the board later this year for consideration at one or more public hearings if the board does direct us to work on an ordinance. Next slide, please. So we would like board direction on whether the board would like staff to proceed with developing an ordinance for short-term rental requirements and a license process. And we'd also like to get clarity about whether the board concurs with limiting an ordinance focus to short-term rentals in the urban unincorporated area. And lastly, any other thoughts that the board might have on this topic, we would appreciate. And that's staff's presentation and I'd be happy to take questions.
Commissioners, why don't we start with questions? But then, as you go through your questions, if you have answers to these three staff questions, please chime in on that too. Commissioner Rogers, go ahead.
Yeah, we've heard this thing a few times and I've always concurred with the folks who are subjected to the problems that we need to have some sort of, of process. So I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of doing that, but I, I have a couple of questions. One, reacquaint me with the term, uh, short-term rental. So I know exactly what that means to us in terms of days, hours, months, whatever we're meaning. Secondly, did we do, if we developed this, which hopefully we might take a look at, what, what are the surrounding cities doing in terms of their ordinances? I'd be curious, a lot of these are obviously next to cities, which ultimately might be taking those areas over. And I'd kind of like to match so that you don't have county ordinance on one side of the street and city ordinance on the other. So, what, what can you do to inform us about that and whether you've looked at it and tried to, to mesh them up? And then, second, or thirdly, what, what is the enforcement proposal in this? That's always, you know, the million-dollar question, you can legislate anything, but enforcing is the trick. So, those are my ideas and thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. So in terms of what a short-term rental is, it's a, a dwelling or a portion of a dwelling that is rented or leased for a period of less than 30 days. So that's the, there is actually no like federally recognized definition per se, but that's the common definition that's used across many jurisdictions in Oregon and throughout the US. It's the, that's the, less than 30 days is sort of like the magic time period. And in terms of what surrounding cities do, staff has looked at that. Beaverton and Hillsborough, we've looked at both of them. Neither of those two cities have specific, and we've also looked at Tigard. Neither of those, or all three of those cities, none of them have specific short-term rental regulations. Tigard does not currently allow short-term rentals in any of its districts except its commercial district. It doesn't allow accommodations period and it considers short-term rentals accommodations. So it doesn't allow them in its residential areas, only in the commercial areas. And Beaverton doesn't have, does not have short-term rental regulations currently, although they have indicated an interest in developing them. I'm not sure how much progress they've made, but they don't have them now. And Hillsborough likewise doesn't have short-term rental specific regulations. They've approved some short-term rentals in the city of Hillsborough through their bed and breakfast allowance, which is a, I think it requires a, it's a land use application and requires a type 3 hearing. So, so that's how those nearby jurisdictions are handling it. And Chair Harrington.
Didn't you, if I remember rightly, Susan, or Suzanne, excuse me, the issue paper that you provided to us in February of 2020, I thought did a nice job of summarizing what our area cities do as well.
That, that information was covered in the issue paper, yeah. I just realized it was a long time ago that folks might have read that, so.
Yeah, yeah. But we, we have, in addition to that nice summary you just gave us, we do have that document to go back to. Thank you.
Enforcement, Suzanne, did you want to?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. So enforcement, I think there are a couple of components to that. I mean, the one important and sort of crucial thing is, is if we were to adopt regulations, how would the county know where these are? And so that is, that is why we would need to, if we did have regulations, we would need to have a contract with a short-term rental monitoring company, a private company. And there are a couple of those out there. And that, and they serve, there are, they have contracts with other Oregon jurisdictions. They can, they can locate them, they can, what they call scrape the webs, they can locate the listings. Right now, if county staff didn't have that kind of a service and we had regulations, it would be difficult for us to know which properties had a short-term rental, to know which properties need a license. Because if you've ever gone to book an Airbnb, for example, yourself, you'd see that Airbnb will show you sort of the very rough locations of short-term rentals within sort of a two-mile radius. But they don't tell you the address of the short-term rental until you actually book the Airbnb rental. So, so we wouldn't have any way as staff to know where a short-term rental was in terms of its address unless we were like on a site like that and actually booking short-term rentals, which presents some problems there. I, I think, so that's one component is having a company be able to identify where these are. So we will have the, have the ability to know which ones need, which properties need to have licenses. The other issue is, what happens when maybe complaints come in about a, a short-term rental and perhaps one that is already licensed by the county, what happens? And I think what happens sort of depends on the nature of what the complaint is. The, if it's a noise complaint, which I think are the most common complaints we've gotten about short-term rentals thus far in the county, there are a couple of ways that could happen. If we have a contract with a short-term rental monitoring company, one of the services that they offer is a, is a 24/7 hotline that a neighbor can call or email to complain about a short-term rental nearby. And the benefit of, of that service is that if it's a complaint about noise, for example, typically a noise complaint in the evening would go straight to the sheriff's office. But in the case of a short-term rental and if we had this, this hotline, that would allow the, the short-term rental company to then turn around and call the short-term rental operator at the time the noise is occurring and put, initially put the onus on the operator to, you know, call the tenants and tell them to pipe down or even show up at the rental and tell them to pipe down. And the operator would have motivation to do that because they don't want a sort of a strike against them on the county's records about not having, about having their rental be a problem. So they, they'd have a motivation to try to solve the problem more quickly and it might take some of those types of calls away from the sheriff's department. So I think that's how it could play out for a noise complaint, for example. And trying to think what some of the other examples are. We have requirements for, for maximum occupancy, for example. How many people can be in the unit? And if a neighbor called the hotline to complain about that, for example, they would have the opportunity to upload even a photo of like, you know, a large number of people going in, for example, and that could be part of the evidence. So, there's a benefit, there's multiple benefits to having a, a monitoring company on contract for this and that they can also help with collecting evidence for enforcement to occur. And you might have some follow-up questions to that, Commissioner Rogers, I'd be glad to take them.
I, I wanted to chime in just because I think there's a, a, a basic thing here that sometimes gets lost on me and so I just want to make sure that everyone else is up to speed. Right now, short-term rentals are allowed in unincorporated Washington County. We don't have to do anything. What we're talking about is regulating them. So if you, if you are comfortable with just having them continue on, you don't have to do anything. But it, this is really a question about regulation. So they're, they're already out there and they're unregulated. And if you don't do anything, they'll continue to be unregulated. So, I, I think that point sometimes gets lost on me just because it's, it's a use that we don't define specifically in the code, but it's more like a, you know, a lease term for an existing dwelling that's, that's allowed when you get the use initial.
Thank you, Annie.
Any other commissioners, go ahead, Commissioner Willie. Oh, and Commissioner Teresa, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Pam, you want to jump in there?
Sure. Suzanne, one of my concerns in the very beginning of the presentation, I don't think we included safety as one of the reasons for regulations. And when I reflect on the situation at Rock Creek and other places, I'm, I just want to make sure that that's included. And when we, when we've heard testimony from constituents, safety has been a, a very high priority. You've talked about noise and, you know, lots of people and that type of thing, but ultimately I think it's about safety. I am in support of developing an ordinance for this. And I'm fine with it being focused on the urban unincorporated area. But I've certainly had a lot of input from constituents from District 2 about this issue. And so I, I am fully in support.
Yeah, Pam, just, just to follow up, Pam, I mean, in the original slide presentation that was presented and that map, I got a kick out of the map because it looks like, I don't know, Dumbo the Elephant or something there if you step back and look at it. But it does, it does reflect, if you're kind of having a good imagination, you can get there. It, it does reflect though in that map, and I'm just now scrolling down to it, that District 2 has really a significant number of short-term rentals in there. And I can certainly see how that is because it's predominantly all, you know, unincorporated. But, so the, the concerns that I wrote down were, when you talk about a full cost recovery and in your presentation notes, you said that there's, it's estimated that there's 400 to 570 short-term rentals in an incorporated area. So, I'd be more interested in a full cost recovery because when we talk about that, you know, it always makes me nervous when we are pedicating enforcement on a full cost recovery. So, at the high end of that scale, we have 570 and we're charging, I don't know, do you have an idea as to what a permit costs? A license fee costs to do this? Is it $100? Is it a per-use? Is it, so do you have some guidelines for how much you'd charge there? And then you apply that to the 570 and theoretically, over a period of time, we get 100% compliance, which we probably never will. That's our full cost recovery and that concerns me because I really don't think we'll get there.
And we, we get some preliminary calculations based on the 570 number and based on staff time to review a license application and sometime for compliance and sometime for a, a company like Host Compliance or one of those, the companies that Suzanne talked about. And the numbers are, are somewhat high because of that. As in, just for context, I believe that Clackamas County's license was somewhere between $800 and $900, Suzanne, for a two-year license. And our numbers were coming out somewhere around that as well.
Oh, okay.
That's correct, Teresa.
Okay, well, that's significantly higher than I thought it was going to be.
And Commissioner, I would, I guess I would add to that too. Just like with our normal fee setting process, if we find that we're out of balance, you know, we have a, a process built in each year whereby we can bring forward a proposal to the board to either raise or potentially lower fees so that we try to keep ourselves somewhat in balance with true cost of service. So we, we would need to set an, an initial fee based on some assumptions as we get into this and really discover what the true costs are. Then we may need to come back and, and talk about adjustments to that, to that initial fee.
Okay. Well, and I, and I really, the other part of this is accountability by the owners. And to hold them responsible for allowing fraternity parties, whatever kinds of, the, the kind of parties that will trigger certainly an enforcement phone call. How can we, how can we feasibly, other than we revoke their license? So I don't know if it's a three-strike rule or what it would be. But also could, is it possible that we would actually, every time they rented this, that we would require, or maybe they obviously have it, the name of the renter? And hold them also accountable, is that, is that too far of a reach? Is it even doable?
I think in terms, well, I'm not sure in general if that would be, if that's doable for every violation, but I think for noise violations, if it, if it gets to the point where the noise violation does go to the sheriff's department and the sheriff comes out, the sheriff's representatives have indicated to us that it's the, the renter that they would cite. It's not the, it's not the short-term rental operator, it's the actual renter. the renter that they would cite. It's not the, it's not the short-term rental operator, it's the actual renter that they would cite. So in that case, that would be, that the onus would fall on the renter. But there are some other potential violations, like if the operator wasn't making sure that trash was collected at the, you know, intervals that they need to. That would be something that would be, that could be something that that our code compliance could, could potentially cite the operator for. That would be, that would be, that onus would be on the operator.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, Commissioner, I would add to that one, too. So there's sort of a relationship. In this case, what we're proposing is essentially a regulatory relationship between the owner and the county in terms of the licensing, and then there's a sort of rental agreement between the owner and the renter. And the owner should be imposing, you know, their rules and our restrictions on the renters. And then there's sort of a compliance chain almost between the renter and the owner, and then the owner to the county.
Well, I have rented through Airbnb, and it is interesting that they post what the rent is. And then you have to go down one more step further to see what all the fees and charges that they pass through from the city and the county and everything else that goes on. And it's generally a pretty significant bump on top of the rent. So, yeah, it's always interesting. I'm assuming at some point in time, that's probably where this we're going to go. So if we're charging them $800 or $900 a year for a fee, plus they're going to charge, they're going to do an allocation of that, and they're going to charge some of that on top of the rent. So anyway, yeah, it'll be interesting to see how this plays out, but I'm certainly supportive of us moving in this direction.
And I want to just clarify, too. I think we're saying probably in the 800 to 900 range every two years.
Commissioner Fie, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, I have a question. Probably a comment. I appreciate the clarification you made, Andy, and in terms of like, this is really focused on regulating. And I wasn't sure if, you know, short-term rentals is a certain kind of business model, and unincorporated areas of Washington County, we do not regulate businesses. So why we're picking on this particular group and as the map shows, like, I haven't heard, I don't know if Commissioner Scouton heard any feedbacks from people in District 1, but I haven't seen any complaints. I see you shaking your head, Chair, so I assume you did. But I haven't heard anything, and I haven't gotten any some of the notes passed on, and I probably could check with the staff. However, you know, as a public health person myself, I know that tobacco is one of the, you know, one, we don't regulate stores or businesses that sell tobacco products. And yet we know the harms that the tobacco cost is not only for our young and youth kids as well as the impact it has as an adult. So I'm not, I don't, I, my comment is, I am not sure where I stand on this. I'll just come back and let you guys know my feedback, but I, I don't, I just want to make sure we're not picking on certain groups because certain people are making really loud complaints. And I want to make sure that people in Aloha, especially who are unincorporated, who run short-term rentals to supplement their incomes, there isn't a unintended consequences or further financial impacts that we're costing through this process.
I'd like to just, Nafisa, or excuse me, Commissioner Fie, I'd just like to point out that we had a, in Rock Creek, about, I think it was two, I think it was before I was actually in office, but we had a a gun violence and a death at one of those situations. We've had lots of complaints at the CPOs, and they're generally around people who rent their units on, they rent per person at a cost rate, so that if they have a party of 20 or, or, you know, more, they rent it at 150 a night per person. So they're making a whole lot of money, and that's, Stephen, I don't know how, you know, I don't know how we could get into that piece of the regulation, but that's generally the complaint. And I fully support what you're saying, is if we've got somebody who has an ADU that's supplementing their income by renting that, we want to make sure that we continue to support that type of model. But this is a problem that has been really significant throughout, throughout unincorporated Washington County. So I've attended CPO meetings at, in CPO 1, CPO 3, where people are really worried for their safety in their, in their neighborhoods. And the, the situation is just, it's way out of hand in many of these cases where people are making, you know, hundreds of, or thousands of dollars a night on house because they've got 30 people and having a rager. So that's the situation, I think, that we're trying to address. And Stephen, am I correct about that?
Yeah, we've had some concerns about large parties, and so that brings along with it sort of, you know, some, so one of our proposals is to limit occupancy based on the number of bedrooms in a home. And then to obviously have a tool available to help with enforcing noise restrictions because typically a party's going to have some noise associated with it. And so I think, you know, the idea was that, you know, even though we have 500 plus of these that may be operating at any given time, the number of complaints overall has been relatively small. I would say, I think most operators tend to be conscientious. The idea here is a bit of a carrot and a stick. So the carrot being putting some rules in place and some monitoring and tracking to help incentivize owners to behave well and encourage their renters to behave well, and then providing some enforcement tools in the event where that doesn't happen. And again, I think one of the key things that we heard from the board early on was the ability to be able to shut down problem, problem rentals. And so that's one of the key things that we're hoping to achieve with this, too. And I was just going to suggest, Commissioner Fie, we'd be happy to set up a briefing time with you just to kind of walk you through some of this, and we can go back and look through complaints that we may have received more specifically in District 1.
Commissioner Rogers, you unmuted again?
Yep, I am. I made my comments. Again, I am fine with the ordinance in urban unincorporated. But my take on the rural area, I'd like to bifurcate that because it's a much more complicated issue. I think Jerry and I are probably the only two who have substantial amounts of rural area, and I understand that Bittner's and others would like to have abilities to put in places, but there's a lot of issues when you get into the rural area with the facilities, meaning bathroom facilities. There's a lot of issues in regard to dustless highways, so that people's crops are getting a lot of dust from traffic and roads that weren't intended to have traffic on them. And just building code issues, there's a ton of stuff, so it's not that I'm opposed personally in looking at that. I just think that it's a pretty big apple to bite it all in one bite if you're going to try to take both the urban and the rural, because they're very
They're recommending two separate, the recommendation is to apply this just to the UUAs and not to the rural. So you agree with that?
I do agree, but what I was responding to was the issues that you had. People, people were saying, but how about the rural? And so I'm respecting what you're saying and saying to those who make those comments, it's too complicated to do that. So, yes, I, I'm exactly agreeing and trying to respond to those who said, let's go to the rural, too. So, okay.
Great. Do other commissioners have any last comments or questions? Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Fie. I'll wait.
I just want to clarify one thing. How's this different than a business license then? Or business ordinance in Washington County?
Well, we don't have a business license. I mean, this would be, this would, this would be a license, but we don't have like another, another license.
Right. So wouldn't it be covered in a business license or ordinance, this issue?
The kind of things that we would be looking at adding to this would go beyond what you would normally do with a business license. I think a business license just checks, is it okay for you to be operating a business here? And it's, it's a a very simple thing. Typically, I think what we're proposing here would have some conditions on it that would go beyond what you might normally do with a, with a business license. And as noted, and you've noted, too, Commissioner Fie, the county doesn't have a business license at this time.
Well, if I could chime in there, too, again, we don't usually have problems with businesses throwing parties and, and having noise complaints at night. We, the reason why we would look at a business license, quite frankly, is peer registration. So we know who we have, what kind of industries we have, and we actually have a database when we have things like COVID. We can actually reach out to them and contact them and tell them of the resources that we have to help them through this, where we had none of that. And you could see that in the responses that we got. The city's businesses were much more responsive than the unincorporated areas were because the unincorporated areas may not even know about it. So, yeah, there's a significant difference in what we're trying to do with short-term rentals and permitting those versus the, the direction we may be going of asking our businesses to just register and tell us what kind of business they are, maybe how many employees they have, those kinds of things. So considerably different purpose.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, Commissioner Willie, but we have, I know from the data from tobacco retail work that's done at the state level, we know some businesses who, they might not be throwing parties, who are not following the, the rules and the regulations, and no, they are selling to young kids.
Which is why, Commissioner Fie, we've authorized the tobacco licensure program already, but it had
No, I'm using an analogy, Chair, to, to the distinction that while some businesses might not be throwing parties, there are businesses who are not following the rules. I'm making that distinction, Chair.
Right. But we don't have any other means by which to deal with the problems and complaints that we've been hearing about from constituents in the urban unincorporated areas for years. This was a problem that was highlighted in both your district as well as Commissioner Thrice's district. It had been on the LUT work plan in prior years. Because of the level of complaints, we advanced it to a Priority 1 area in the 2019-2020 work plan, which is what led to the issue paper that was published in the early part of 2020 and the subsequent work sessions that the rest of us have gone through. So we have no other tools in the toolbox to pursue other than this short-term rental licensure program.
And I think if I could add to Commissioner Fie's, you raise an interesting point. There are a few limited business types that are currently, do have some specific regulations in the county code. And that's the approach that we're essentially proposing with short-term rentals. So secondhand dealers or pawn shops in this case, social gambling and cable communication systems have some specific regulations around how they do their business. And I think, you know, given the different kinds of businesses, too, there is a complex sort of regulatory web. So there are some types of businesses that may be regulated more directly by the state, and there are others that may be regulated at a local level. And this is one that I think to Commissioner, or Chair Harrington's point, is one that would be regulated at the local level.
The marijuana regulations, or the marijuana businesses may be also in that boat. There are land use regulations as well as state licensure requirements.
So this is not the last step on such an ordinance, so I recommend, Commissioner Fie, if you have other questions, please get a fuller briefing from our staff. But also, I think what I've heard here, Ms. Angie, is that Commissioner Fie needs a briefing on our existing tobacco licensure program for the urban unincorporated areas. So, because I heard something stated about that that didn't seem to match as well. Okay, so I'm just cognizant of the time so that we can finish by 4 o'clock if possible, though I have an issue I need to raise to you commissioners. So from my standpoint, I want to thank staff. This has been a very well-ordered, thoughtful, step-by-step engagement on this topic over the last two-plus years that we now find ourselves. While the number of complaints may be small in number compared to the volume of urban unincorporated short-term rentals, right, 400 to 500 plus, the issues that nearby residents are experiencing are significant. And they have asked us loud and clear for relief. Relief from situations that they have painted in very colorful language and terms because it's what they're experiencing. I would appreciate through this, so, yes, I would like to see you move forward to proceed with an ordinance and a licensure program for the urban unincorporated areas. And as part of that, at least in your staff report, could you illustrate how area residents would know if a rental, if there is a rental in their neighborhood? So how they will learn about this hotline that you're referring to? Versus, what if it's just an unruly neighbor, right, who had a wild hair all of a sudden, and, or maybe a parent went away for the weekend and all of a sudden an older child, you know, or a younger adult decided to host a party of friends and it got out of control, because that does happen, too. So how is the neighbor to distinguish between those situations? Another piece of information that would help me in, in the staff report would be the estimate of cost on the licensure, and I know some of this information was in the, the issue paper and the prior work sessions. And how compliance for full cost recovery would work. And also related to that, how does revoking a license happen? Right? What does it take? Three strikes within a year and then you're out, or what? So those are just a few more things that will help me with how the ordinance moves forward for adoption. So I'm yes on one, I'm yes on two, limiting to the UUAs, and I already shared my thoughts.
Excellent.
Any last questions or comments, commissioners? Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Okey-dokey. Sounds like we have at least four of us who want to proceed to the next step.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very well done. Commissioners, I just have one last thing to ask you about. I, it's, it's around COVID and the fact that Clackamas County, the Clackamas County Commission wrote a letter to Governor Brown just over about a week and a half ago. And I finally had a chance to dive into the letter in, in further detail. And the reason I'm, I'm raising this now is because what I read out of that letter is they were frustrated about entering, about how the county was transitioned to high risk. And I know from the indications that the governor's office publishes out to us each week, and you all, I believe, get those emails as well. I fell into the same trap that I think several of the Clackamas County commissioners fell into, and we just didn't notice. And so the letter points out that they didn't think they'd gotten a caution period. Well, we didn't notice, but also the caution is only for for movement after you've moved ahead a week or two. And we were outside of that realm. Then on page, well, on the letter I printed out is page three for me, where they talk about the hospitalizations. The state, as you may recall, did change factors around hospitalization. But then their last point seems to be to set up a system so that the state isn't looking at just the case counts. And I think, to me, that comes across as, well, you know, with the vaccinations, one of the benefits of the vaccinations is that people don't get, they can still contract the virus, but the symptoms aren't as bad. It reduces that risk of hospitalization and death, which is good. I do totally identify with their highlighting that most of their cases have been like social outbreaks and are not workplace outbreaks. But the reason that I'm taking us to this letter is because I'm sensitive to the fact that we, our county is being transitioned back to high risk. And I just wanted to make sure that in your conversations with other colleagues that we can separate ourselves to, from the terms that are in their letter. That's all. If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Have we, has that letter, are you the only one that has copied that letter?
I went and did a Google search.
Oh, that's how you got that letter? Oh, I thought they sent it to you. Okay.
No, no.
Well, you know, it's interesting that, that we're having this conversation because I've been talking to Marnie about this today. Just at what point in time do we stop being held hostage by those kinds of situations? And I guess I could say, we, I could say our business community, especially being hit. And at what point in time are we going to, I guess, revert back to the same scenario as a flu season? Realizing I know COVID is much more, much more harmful and certainly more difficult to deal with, but at the same time, I just feel like we're rapidly approaching that point where we say we're going to continue to preach the message, social distancing, have some of those guidelines in place. We've got to be good about this, but at the same time, our businesses can't continue to suffer for social individual irresponsibilities. And so that's where I, that's where I'd like us to go pretty soon. So I don't know.
Yeah. I think a lot of us can relate to that. You know, I think it really is reliant upon getting those vaccinations out there. And, you know, that is a real challenge as well. There's the challenge of the vaccine availability. And, you know, I know that OHA and the governor and everyone on her staff is equally frustrated. We all want to have a larger and a predictable vaccine supply so that we can project, okay, at this run rate, we'll have, you know, we need for full community, not immunity, herd immunity or whatever the term is. We need seven, at least 70% of adults to be vaccinated. Well, you know, that's, that's a lot and we're not quite there. We're making huge progress, right? I think I just saw on the news, 50% of adults in the United States have received at least one vaccination. But we still have more work to do. But I see we have our expert, Marnie Kyle, here. Far be it for me to try and step over, over her, her realm of expertise. So Marnie, what have you got for us?
Well, Chair Harrington and board, to be honest, I only heard part of this conversation because I didn't listen in on the LUT work session. But, so I, I know that this is extremely difficult news to go back to high risk. And I know that it's really even more difficult for our local businesses and in particular restaurants and bars and indoor venues. And believe it or not, the economic vitality is really important in the public health world because it is, it's an important long-term social determinant of health, predictor of health, whether or not people have jobs and a living wage. So we do care about that. But we're also balancing that against a disease that is still deadly because we don't have enough people vaccinated yet. So I was just looking, and in today's report, we had seven new hospitalizations just today. So people are still getting sick and getting sick enough to be in the hospital. Commissioner Willie asked me if there's been new deaths, and I'm not sure the timeframe, but if you remember in March, we were, we were, we were commemorating the one-year anniversary. And at that time, I think we had approximately 215 deaths. And as of today, I looked at our data and we're up to 230 deaths. So we have had more death in Washington County. So, you know, I, I think it's really the most critical messages. We need everyone, we need our residents to hang, our, our community members, excuse me, we need our community members to really hang tough for a little bit longer and continue to physically distance, to wear their masks, to wash their hands. I think I heard you, Chair Harrington, talking about vaccine. We're making progress, but it's slow progress. And until we get more people vaccinated, we're going to be in this position of having to physically distance and having to, you know, it's, it wasn't happening when we were in immediate, in medium-risk category, moderate-risk category. What we're seeing is people are gathering, people are going to restaurants and bars and they're walking around without their masks. People are going to sporting venues. So people are partaking in high-risk behavior. And I, and I understand, we're all, we're all completely fed up and tired and don't want to do this anymore. And the sun's come out and the birds are singing and we want to be free of this. We want to be beyond this. And the, the facts are the facts. We are not. What we're seeing is variants entering our state, California variant, the UK variant, those are highly contagious variants. And they're still trying to understand whether they're actually more virulent, meaning cause more severe disease. We're still trying to learn and understand that. So we have to be vigilant. We have to keep wearing a mask. We have to get vaccinated as soon as our turn comes up. So I don't know if that covers what your full discussion was, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
Thank you, Chair. Marty, I fully support what you're saying. And I, and I think we really have to keep in, into context. I, I think the World Health Organization came out today and said that there, today was one of the highest days in terms of, and I recognize this is worldwide in terms of cases identified, but we're, we're just not out of this yet. And, and while I recognize the impact to our businesses, I think we're going to expect some roller coaster for the next few months. And at least if we're on the roller coaster, the businesses can open up when, when, when we're at that stage and hopefully we'll plateau. But if things get bad, I think we have to be reactive to it. You know, I'm, I'm not comfortable with people going to the hospital, you know, and, and the, the situation. We just don't want to be back where we were before. So, you know, I, that's, that's my view.
Well, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't chime in. And Jerry, I, I hear exactly what you're hearing. Businesses don't want to hear the saying, again, if we can just hold on a little bit longer. They've been holding on way too long. They, they have lost profits, they've lost employees, they've lost income. They're, they're lucky to stay up another year. So it, we have been good. We've been trying. And I think the Commissioner Willie's comment had to do with preach the social distancing, preach the masking. But it's very hard for some of us, and I have kids in other parts of the country and the world, and they don't have the same standards. They, they take risks different. And one's in Arizona and it's wide open. And they have many, many more cases a day and many, many more issues. They have somehow said that that is acceptable to them. Not acceptable to me. I want something a lot different. But I don't know where they assess, you know, where that is acceptable. And everybody says that one death is too many, and I agree. But the deaths of, of your business community isn't good either. And so I'm not picking on you. I'm just listening to what Jerry was saying. And maybe he hears it just simply because of the downtown Hillsborough. I hear it from Tiger and Toowallton and Sherwood and on and on. And so I've been holding the line like everybody else, but I can tell you it's not pleasant anymore. And it's, it's a science that keeps changing, six feet and three feet. And, you know, only if we get this amount of, of people who are inoculated in us, we'll know it's a different number. A governor who is changing numbers all the time. It, it's very frustrating. And when they asked me, they said, how many employees at the county have lost their wages? How many of them have lost their benefits? How many have you laid off? I said, well, none. And I don't intend to either. But they're frustrated because their businesses are experiencing that. So we're going to see a big backlash. It hasn't happened yet, but it's going to. And, and so I think Jerry's just asking, in my opinion, a logical question. What are we going to do? Because you've been doing great with your public announcements. What are we going to do to say that we have more than lip service of, gee, I, I, you know, we're going to stick together for another month or two or three? What are we going to say definitively that we're there with them? I mean, we really are. And, and so that's what's important to me. So I've said.
I think that's, that is a good question. I don't think it's fair for, for me in raising the Clackamas County letter to put Marnie on the spot, spot to have an answer to that question today. So I would just ask Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Rogers if we could ask to have our staff come back at another time to talk about, you know, COVID next steps and where we see and understand the governor's office is heading with regard to rules and regulations, if I can play off of our short-term rental.
That's perfect. I would like to say one thing. Marnie, if I, if, I wasn't picking on you. I'm picking on the situations because you're, you, you get an A+ in my, in my book, and I really am supportive of what you do. It, it's just that we've got to have a different messaging. We can't tell people that you can stand in Costco and foot, you know, Fart or Safeway's or Fred Meyer's, wherever you shop, and we're telling other people they're shutting down. I mean, it's just, it's, it's crazy. But if I, you know, if you take that personally, I apologize. That's not directed at you at all. And I like the chair's position. That's where we should be going.
Yeah. No, I don't take any of it personal at all, and I have similar concerns. But the only, the only one thing I would like to respond to is that I know that it feels like we're changing the rules and regulations and guidance all the time. But just as a reminder, this is a novel virus. It didn't even exist 18 months ago or wasn't known to us 18 months ago. And so I think as we learn, we are trying to react to what we're learning. And sometimes that means reducing the regulation from six feet to three feet when you're outside. And sometimes that means increasing regulation because there's new variants and we have to respond to the new variants. So I, I know that's really frustrating too, and it feels like it's, it's always changing. But this isn't like influenza. In influenza, there's 36,000 deaths on a bad year across the United States. And this is, is much more deadly virus than that. It's about 10 times more deadly. So it, it's frustrating, but it's, it's not like a flu season. So we just can't compare it to that, unfortunately.
Thank you, Marnie. And just so you know where I came out of the blue with this, it was just realizing before we closed the meeting today that our county is being transitioned to high risk. And after that meeting with the governor last night, I thought, oh, I better finally look at that Clackamas County letter. And so I Googled it because it was all in the public domain. I not received it from Clackamas County at all. And as I went through the letter, as, as Chair Smith had talked to Leah Horner about it in our meeting on April 5th and then again on the 12th, there were a couple of things mistaken in the letter. We didn't, we, I know I can relate to. I wasn't paying enough attention to the warning week information leading up to it for them. And then there was an incorrect understanding of the two-week extension and that that only applies if you've been, if your status has changed a risk level within the last couple of weeks. So it's not that, oh, you're going to move, but we're going to give you two weeks. That's not the way it works. And that was a misunderstanding. And then the other was about hospital capacity and that the state had already responded to that. And so really, there are two very, there are two points in the letter I can totally relate to. One is these outbreaks being related to the socialization a little bit more so than businesses, which is what we were seeing last spring and summer because, you know, face mask wearing and whatnot is much more widespread. But also just being in the phase now where vaccinations are more prevalent, but we're not quite there yet. So we do still have to rely upon the overall case rate. So thank you for joining us. I think the, I, I've been able to share some thoughts here with my colleagues or not just thoughts, but some learnings that I've had about how the situation is a little bit different than as positioned in the Clackamas County letter. Commissioner Willie?
Yeah, just real quickly, I just Googled it. So yeah, that's all you have to do is Google Clackamas County letter to the governor. COVID letter to the governor. It pops right up. So.
Yep. I think I found it on, on a community newspaper article, but then it linked right to the clackamascounty.us website. Thank you very much for staying 15 minutes longer for that conversation. I really appreciate it, colleagues. Any other thoughts or questions? Ooh, it's Alan in the dark. You look like you're on one of those TV shows where they're trying to protect you in witness protection. Does that mean you turn the audio on and you'll have one of those very deep voices? Alrighty. Well, I think that's it for today. So we'll adjourn today's work session.
All right. Take care, commissioners, and we will see you back for your budget committee orientation tomorrow night.
Great. Thank you. Bye-bye.